Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular Board of Education meeting on March 9th, 2022, for the school district of Waukesha. Welcome tonight. Thank you for joining us. We'll get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Yeah.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Deef.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey. Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Erin Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Sue, Patrick is excused. Sue, can you also verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you kindly. We're going to move right into our bright lights tonight. We have a report from STEM Saratoga, and they're going to be talking about PBL tonight. James, wanna... Are you going to be working on that, or... Come on forward. We're ready for you.
Thank you, sir.
You and your team.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us. I'd like to welcome our team. I'm James Murray, principal at the Waukesha STEM Academy. I'll let everybody introduce themselves.
I'm Colleen Fleming, business teacher at STEM.
Greg Bastner, STEM Pathways.
Kate Mayer's student.
Daria Tokachova's student.
Oh, okay. We had a presentation. I didn't... I sent it to Stacy, so I apologize for that. But we're here essentially to speak about STEM Pathways, our business ventures, our launch, and things that our students created this year. So essentially, our student involvement in what I guess we would call our STEM Pathways, our electives when we were in school, where we would have gym and music and arts and things like that. In our first year that we opened, we had one thing called STEM Inc., which was great for about two months, and then it ended up being a total disaster because it was project-based learning at its finest and at its worst because the students, about 60% were engaged, but 40% were not. So we had to figure out the best way to get these things rolling. What we did in turn was break up our electives into something called STEM Pathways. Students got to choose from... Oh, there we go. From STEMU, if we can possibly go back to the front. Thank you for how we brought that up. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry about that. Apologize for that. So I'll start again. Our mission is to create, engage, think, collaborate, and innovate our educational experience for students, to provide them with a different opportunity, to essentially learn the things, real life, and experiences that are going to get them prepared for the real world. So STEM Pathways, I'm going to let our team discuss that and sort of explore what that looks like.
Okay, we have six rotations. Every six weeks, the students get to choose from either a biz class, a STEMU class, cultures, or art studio. Within those rotations, sometimes we team teach, and that's what we're going to highlight tonight, one of our team-teaching pathways. That's called... That we called Small Business Startup. And should I go... Sorry.
So this is sort of what I started hinting at. So initially, we had STEM Inc. STEM Pathways, if you look at our grid, it looks like a lot of mumbo jumbo. Essentially, what STEM Pathways is, is the students choose an elective every six weeks. Across the top, there's STEMU, STEM Biz, STEM Cultures, and STEM Art. Every six weeks, students get to choose a new opportunity. STEMU is basically Project Lead the Way, Fab Lab, fabrication, CNC, milling, 3D printing, things like that. STEM Biz is exactly that. It's business. It's the marketing. It's the things you're going to hear about tonight from the ladies that are with us. Cultures is humanities, social studies, and world languages. And on Art Studio, we introduced, I'd say, five years ago, six years ago, we had a ton of art going on. We had a lot of digital stuff, and I had a ton of students coming to me saying, "STEM is terrible. There's no art class." And if you look at our options up there, it's painting, it's drawing, it's a lot of hands-on art, what we know as art from growing up. And so that's when we altered and shifted to bring real art to STEM. Student highlights, Small Business 101.
So Mr. Bastner and I collaborated together for this. So we had the students come up with a product that would meet a need or somehow improve a product that already existed. And we had them choose the partner, and then they got to work and made a market survey to survey what their peers would be interested in and what type of advertisement they would be more drawn to. Then they... When they had an idea for the product, they researched the production cost, how much it would cost to create. Then we purchased through the school STEAM funds, purchased the materials to create the products. And then... Do you want to go?
Sure.
All right, to them.
So this board that you see here is 50 different businesses that the students came up with themselves. And they wrote all their names on the board and what they were selling. And with that, they were able to find out who their direct and indirect competition were, who's making this, who's making that, oh my god, I gotta make sure that we undercut them just a little bit just to get a competitive edge, whatever. And we circled back to this at the end for students to find out how much they either made or lost. Some people made a lot of money. Some people lost their shirt. But that's part of the learning process of figuring out what your customers want and getting that customer feedback and really learning about the whole concept from start to creation, to selling, to feedback, and what can I do next. A lot of the kids really wanted to sell more and say, "Hey, can we do this next week?" So these two girls back here were actually part of that. And before I introduce them, these are some of the products that the students made with all the machines and fabrication tools that we have available to us. So some of them made keychains, stickers, they made jewelry, they made 3D-printed fish, stationery for school supplies, hand-modelled clay earrings and jewelry. You name it, they came up with it. The amount of creativity was just through the roof, and the excitement level was about the same. And these two girls back here pretty much exemplified that, and we wanted them to share their story.
I'm Kate. I'm in 7th grade.
And I'm Daria. I'm in 8th grade, and we're Taylor's trademarks.
So to begin with, we had to brainstorm so many ideas. We originally had ties or bracelets or socks.
We were going to have ties with this teacher on them, and we were going to sell them for our Valentine's Day school dance. But we realized the dance came before our selling day, so that wouldn't really work out. We're also going to have socks that had days of the week on them, so if you're really forgetful, you're like, "Okay, these are for Monday. These are for Tuesday," and so forth.
The person on our shirt is one of the teachers at our school, Mr. Taylor. He's a pretty cool guy. So our marketing, selling, and profit. To begin with, at the beginning, after we figured out all the details of what we were going to do, we put out a marketing survey to see what people like, what kind of t-shirts they like and what designs they like, what they think the price should be. So once we got all those results, we kind of started factoring in what we should do as a prize, what we should put on. So our first day of sailing... Selling, sorry, we sold five t-shirts, and at the end, we had a profit of negative $2.22. But on the second day of selling, we sold three more shirts and had a plus $3.84 profit. We had to give one free to Mr. Taylor because copyright, of course. And our overall profit was $3.84. The profit formula is revenue, which is the money that you get in from selling, then expenses, the cost it takes to make your product, which then equals your profit.
I'm going to be talking to you about the technical point of view of this project. We used two machines. We used the vinyl cutter, and as the name suggests, it cuts vinyl. And then we used the direct-to-garment printer, which took care of the pictures by printing it in ink. We had quite a few trial and errors. Our first one was vinyl. We ruined two sheets, and on each sheet, we messed up three times because logic told us you would cut a color side up, but no, it was the white side up.
Who knew?
So we lost some money from that. Also tint of the pictures, but that's not really our fault. That was a sublimation printer. Blame it. It was supposed to be like this tint. It's more of an orange tint, but also printed in purple. But people liked it because it was variety, as well as the vinyl stickers, which are different colors.
I have a blue one and choose red one, and people like variety, so we might as well.
Overall, this is a really enjoyable experience.
We gained... Although it wasn't enjoyable, we also gained a lot of knowledge. Like, for me, I had a bit of background of business, but I learned a lot about advertising, like how to market to certain age groups and what's in their best interest to buy our stuff.
I learned how to use different machines in the shop. Last time I took... Shop was in 6th grade, and I'm an 8th grader now, so that was two years ago. I really needed a refresher, and this was a good opportunity to do that. We also learned how to communicate, as I talked to you about the miscommunication. But I feel like without the trial and errors, this wouldn't have been that good of a project because if everything was running smoothly, we would have never learned to talk about our ideas, get our creative juices flowing, to know how to do everything professionally, but still keep it light and fun.
Especially since in the beginning, we weren't friends, but we've become great friends through this, and it was so enjoyable, but yet we learned so much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, please. So as you can see, our main tenets... So just in sticking to our main tenets from our mission and vision, collaborate, engage, think, innovate, and create, was at full force since day one. But the business launch experience, we've done it in small portions before. This was probably the largest to date. And as they indicated, 50-plus businesses were launched, and this is just sort of a bird's eye view. We sold them during connect and lunch, and then all profits went back into our site to reinvest into more supplies for our students. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Paul.
When you showed us the... The kids would pick a subject or something, do they have to rotate through all, whether four of them or what? Six? Four of them. Do they have to have something in all... One of all four of them or not? Or can I just stay in one?
Yes, sir. They do. So the logic behind this, when we initially developed it, was there was STEMU, STEM Biz, and STEM Cultures.
Right.
Six weeks out of pop, so six by six is 36 weeks, right? They have to take at least one STEMU, one Biz, and one Culture so that over three years, it's 18 weeks, which is a semester. And then they leave with the equivalency of another experience of a student at another site.
Yes.
So it's sort of... It's all over the board. Some students will take their three, and then they'll plug in three arts. Some students will take their three and stay in cultures. Spanish is a little bit different because it's three in a row, Spanish one, Spanish one, Spanish one, which is a high school credit. And so those students... So the choice comes down to if I take Spanish one, I know my first three are blocked out. You know, so they have to really navigate their options because that leads to Spanish two for high school credit as well.
Okay.
So there's a lot of variety. And then what we also do is we look at numbers, rosters, enrollment, and if, of course, tanks, you know, if we get five or six students only enrolling in a certain session, we may drop it. And then there's certain rotations where these two may team and co-op on that project, so.
And my point was to make sure that they weren't being so narrow in what they're being exposed to, and you've opened that up.
Yeah, and what this does, Mr. Baumgart, is just the options that they get, I think. You see it really help them navigate their high school choices, their career choices, even their college career pathways. That was a very real conversation for our 8th grade class, so.
Thank you.
It's a lot different than when we were in school, and we think about it maybe junior year or so. To hear a 6th grader talk about that, it's pretty amazing, so.
You had mentioned that the profits go back into the program, and I'm assuming some projects, there were a profit, and some, there were losses. And just wonder what the grand total was. Did you come out in the plus side or the negative side as a school... The team as a whole, if you wish.
So the overall sales of the four days... It was originally slated to be three days, but the students were so excited to sell that we actually extended it one more day.
Nice.
But they had a total of, I want to say it was $574 of sales over the four days. The Amazon and t-shirt totals were roughly about there, so we came out just a little bit ahead. But we still have some extra inventory left over, so we're on the plus side for when we launch it again next year.
And obviously, the real value is the learning, so, yeah.
Yeah, tons of it happens.
Yes, yeah. Any other questions? Well, thank you. Fantastic.
Great job.
Moving on to our recognitions, we do have one recognition this evening. Assistant Superintendent Thede will introduce. Okay. Welcome.
Hi. Okay. Good evening. Make sure the whole crew is coming in. Okay. Okay, so, hi, everyone. So this evening, the Employee Recognition Award for March of 2022 is being presented to Lori Byer. So Lori's going to hang out behind me here while I read some words. So Lori started in the school district in 2001, and she's currently a teacher's assistant or an aide at STEM Randall. So her nominators begin by saying that Mrs. Byer is an asset to Randall STEM School and the community. Lori reached out about joining STEM solely for the purpose of that Makerspace position. Creating, building, and designing are her passion, and her enthusiasm spills over to the students and the teachers. Lori works tirelessly to support the Makerspace team, as well as every Randall STEM team, to integrate the Makerspace into the STEAM learning on a consistent basis. So STEAM is the application of the STEM principles within the school. So she meets with teams regularly to discuss the STEAM units. She works collaboratively with teachers to ensure that the weekly Makerspace time is directly tied to the learning for each STEAM unit. Lori has worked to create detailed lessons that are engaging for students. She makes the Makerspace time more meaningful by always having an activity pre-planned and materials readily available for students. Lori's dedication to her work in the Makerspace has moved Randall STEAM time to the next level, allowing for a seamless approach to integrating Makerspace into the weekly routine and ensuring that the time is meaningful for students and their learning. Lori works hard for the teachers at STEM Randall to make projects and ideas happen, framing the work around the standards that are being targeted. She cares for students and makes the Makerspace come alive with great creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration. The hours and care she puts into the space never goes unnoticed. Everything is well organized, and she makes sure that kids have the materials they need to make their imaginative thoughts come to life. Part of what makes STEM unique is their ability to have student voice and buy-in, which in turn leads to engagement, similar to what you just heard from the students at STEM Middle School. Students are able to have a choice in how they show proficiency within a subject area and standard. Lori understands this and gives students the freedom to think differently about different subject areas. Students have access to time, space, and materials to create and be innovative. It is a special process to be a part of, and we are so glad that Mrs. Byer is with us along in this journey. So on behalf of the school district, I'd like to congratulate Lori Byer on being selected to receive the Employee Recognition Award.
Thank you so much for this. As it was said, I have worked for the district for 20 years, but I am a product of this district. And this is very, very gratifying for me, so thank you very much. I just wrote down a couple of things to say. Makerspace is unique, as you said. And we have a little motto written on our wall in Makerspace, which says, "We are inventors, collaborators, scientists, mathematicians, and engineers. We are innovators, and we try to do that each and every day in our Makerspace." I try to encourage everybody every day to think outside the box and try something new. And that's, I think, the unique path to discovering their talents. And so it's my honor to work with everyone I do at Randall STEM. We are working hard to give everybody the best opportunities possible, and I appreciate all of their support. And thank you to Melissa Horn, our principal, for always saying yes to my crazy ideas and inspirations to just make our Makerspace even that much more better. So thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Lori. Moving on to our student representatives, giving a report on Waukesha South High tonight is Roman and Nawa. Welcome. You're not going to let the principal steal the show, guys, are you?
Shouldn't have to be here. Does it come up in the... Screen mirroring is hot.
It showed up and it disappeared.
Wait a second. Oh, it went to black, yeah.
Might have to go to Plan B and wing it, you guys.
I think you want us to give us a minute to see. The other thing I do is try and reboot it. Reboot your... Yeah. Well, let's see, taking it. It could reboot that, but you'd...
It could send it like this.
Do you want to just go through the information?
Yeah.
The students will have it to be able to speak from, right? Yeah, that's fine. We'll be good listeners. How about it?
Sounds good. So, good evening, school board members, parents, and students. We're here to present one last time about the awesome things going on at our school, Waukesha South.
Okay, so we had a few students of third quarter.
So yesterday, all the juniors took the ACT, which is pretty awesome for us because we had the day off. And I actually heard nothing but good things from the juniors, so I think it went pretty well. Additionally, last year, we had 27 students score a 30-plus on the ACT, which is pretty awesome.
So tomorrow, we have an automobile dealers' association of mega Milwaukee, and two South students finished sixth in the competition, Kevin Gutierrez and Joseph Balzer. It's a hands-on and written competition where students competitively compete against one another and test their knowledge on automotives. And then we also had a handful of legislators tour the school the other day, mainly the engineering and health academy classes, and a panel of students asked them questions.
And so just last week, we also had a couple of national merit semifinalists. And just this week, we just learned that all three became national merit finalists, which is more than any other school in the district. So we'd like to congratulate Owen Anteline, Harsha, and Hasegatapati on this awesome achievement. And now athletics and activities, which Najra will start us off with.
So for our girls' basketball, our team hit season highs as a team in points scored, three pointers made, free throw percentages, and rebounds on senior night versus Waukesha North. Senior Ashlyn Skinner Barrett scores her 1,000th point in her career in the playoff game at Janesville Craig. And Ashlyn is just the sixth player in Waukesha South history to achieve this accomplishment. As for boys' basketball, after ending a 61-conference game losing streak just over a year ago, the boys' team took a classic eight-conference championship. And the last time the boys' basketball team won a conference championship was in 2006. They are also regional champs, and we are playing tomorrow at Burlington against McWanago for the sectional semifinal. And also, junior Tyran Cook scores his 1,000th-point career in this season.
For boys' swim, the boys finished fifth place at the WIA sectionals with 15 out of 18 scores, coming in as personal best. And Waukesha South, once again, hosted the state swim meet, and they're looking to sign an extension for the following years, which it did manage to get, which is pretty awesome because it happens right at the same time as our wrestling regional. So on that Saturday morning, it just packed with a bunch of cars and parents repping South gear, which is always awesome to see. Speaking of wrestling, too, we actually... This is a pretty interesting story because I'm a wrestler, so I can speak from personal experience. So we started the season off with just one coach, when in years past, we had almost a dozen. So we had many students participate in a panel to nominate a head coach, which we did, and his name is Quentin Fisher. So we had a target on our backs start the season because we were regional champs last year. So we had some big shoes to fill. And although we did have a couple of problems in the beginning of the season trying to get everyone accustomed, we did manage to have six wrestlers qualify for the sectional individual tournament and two wrestlers qualify for the state tournament, which is awesome to see. Not only that, but we also won the Craig Belcher Tournament in Milwaukee Hamilton and hosted three awesome tournaments, the Black Shirt Duels, where many wrestlers were undefeated. We also hosted the Ken Hiney, where we had many championships. And we had many black shirts in the championship rounds. And we also hosted the regional tournament. And one thing that's also important to note is, as a senior, you always worry for the future because you're not there. So we had a lot of freshmen step up on varsity this season to fill in a couple of gaps. And from what I heard, many are actually doing, continuing to wrestle in the offseason at clubs. So that's always awesome to hear for the future.
So for gymnastics, the Waukesha team placed fourth at the conference championship. Waukesha South's Julia Stillman, she's a junior, placed seventh all-around, and she was also named First Team All-Conference on her floor routine. As for boys' hockey, the boys' hockey team won conference championship, and they earned the first seed in the state tournament series. And there are two South athletes on varsity, Cade Keel and Carter Lowe.
For the ski and snowboard team, the ski team went to state. And of the 22 teams that qualified and competed, the team placed 10th, 12th, and 12th, once again, in different divisions. And then both men and women's snowboard teams took third place in the state competition. This is the third time the men's were on the podium. This is the first time the women's were on the podium. So that's awesome to acknowledge. And then junior AJ George won two individual snowboard state championships this season, which is pretty awesome. For cheer, the Waukesha South varsity co-ed cheer team competed at the state championship and brought home their third consecutive state title. So they are back-to-back-to-back championships... to champions. And then the JV team also competed for a state title and came in first. So the cheer team is pretty solid at our school, and we are proud about that.
For dance, the dance team took second place at their regional, and they took seventh place at state. And they competed in Division II, the Palm Division. As for our art award winners, 13 South students received awards for their artworks entered in the 2022 Wisconsin Scholastic Art Awards. Silver and gold key winners will have their pieces on exhibit at the Milwaukee Art Museum from February 5th through March 20th, 2022.
And this year was the first team, they had an official powerlifting team. And while our lifters had a very short notice, like a short time to get ready and prep for their competition, there are still many successes. Athletes like Gian Williams, Aiden Rossa, and Kalen Jackowit qualified for the state powerlifting competition. And just recently, they also qualified for nationals. So, we are very proud about that. For mock trial last year, they, once again, they also have a big target on their back since they were 13th in the nation. And this year, they did not disappoint, once again, coming in fifth at state, going 2-2. There's also a very promising all-freshman team, which is exciting to hear for the future because this team deserves to be known because they're excellent.
For our bowling team, the Waukesha bowling team is heading to state on March 4th through 6th. Congrats to South students Aiden Kritzer, Andrew Barron, Logan Roxa, and Brady Bowman. For HOSA, HOSA explores their unique interests in the health professions. We have 50 students involved this year, and 22 earned their way to state competitions this year. And they are competing soon for internationals this summer. So, we're very proud of them for that.
For FBLA, which of you that don't know stands for Future Business Leaders of America, and we had many noticeable successes. This is a competition where students compete in a variety of things, from cybersecurity to business law to journalism. So, we had almost a dozen people placed on the podium and earned first and second place awards, which are now going to state. So, a couple of people, Hannah Marie, Ethan Valdez, Ria Chirakuri, Owen Anteline, and many more, placed top six in their respective competition. For DECA, which is a similar competition, you had four students who qualified for state after last season's competition. Additionally, you had two students who qualified for the international competition and placed sixth, with the sixth-place finish at state.
So, our Waukesha South esports team went undefeated at the WIHSEA Winter Warm-Up Tournament. This is a Waukesha South's first competition for an esports event. This win earned them the privilege to then represent Wisconsin at the Border Battle Event against Minnesota in Rocket League. The WIHSEA broadcasted the game as the Rocket League Match of the Week. For our drama program, the Black Shirt Players performed a winter musical recently last weekend, and they performed "High School Musical" onstage. I saw it. It was really good. And then, recently, they also performed their fall play, "Rose of Treason." And they also had one act advancing to state.
And last but not least, our band, orchestra, and choir are going to Disney World in Orlando over spring break. Or here, they will be playing and participating in clinics where critics will critique their performances. That's all we have for this evening.
That's all? Wow. That is fantastic. Yes. What questions may we have for the students? Well, thanks for your report. We appreciate it very much. And is this the last time South will appear or one more time?
I think this is the last time.
Last time.
Yeah. Well, thank you for representing your school so well. And I'm sure you had fun talking about all the accomplishments and, you know, you know many of the people, too. And fantastic. Well, thank you for that. We wish you luck moving forward in the future. What are your future plans here? Do you mind just taking a quick minute?
Okay. I got accepted into Northwestern early decision, so.
Nice. Congratulations.
Um, I am still undecided. I'm either going to Madison or Whitewater for business marketing.
Fantastic. We both wish you luck finishing out the school year strong, graduating, and moving on to those future aspirations. Thank you for your time. We're now at the section of our meeting where we have an opportunity to listen to our citizens, address the board. We do have almost 30 speakers, 28. We usually allot 30 minutes of time, but I'd like to pop that up to an hour. And that would give each speaker two minutes of time. And Jim, you're going to be running the clock. And at the one-and-a-half-minute mark, if you could give the speakers 30 seconds to kind of wrap up their comments, I would appreciate it. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board and committee meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience and that the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during the public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time. Just a reminder, speakers are here to address the board and not the audience. Our first speaker is Renee Messerschmidt. And Renee will be followed by Kelsey Darv... Darv's... Darvus. Draves, I'm sorry. Kelsey Draves. Renee? Welcome, Rae.
Hello. At the first listening section discussing the merger, I expressed my concern for the amount of behavioral issues the two schools combined will create. To recap, that number is 37% of the reported behavioral incidents and 41% of the school suspensions. I told you of my first-grade son, who was viciously attacked in the middle of his classroom when another student was emotionally triggered. I spoke of the constant help this child needs from the wonderful staff at Whittier. This has caused my son to develop anxiety. I wanted to introduce you to my son. This is Reed. I wanted to share his latest story with abuse in the schools and why it is fundamental to keep the specialized staff in the schools merged or not. Three weeks ago, my son was sitting at lunch when the same student who attacked him before joined him at his table. This child grabbed my son's lunch, and then my son grabbed it back. This triggered the student to launch a series of punches at my son. John Chaconis, Whittier's Behavioral Interventionalist, aka Mr. T., was quick to respond to the incident. He spent a long time consoling my child and working on an effective plan for the other child. John also spent a long time talking to me, stressing the staff at Whittier are taking effective measures to ensure that the child is being taken care of and that the rest of the students are safe. I won't mince words. The second reported incident weighs heavily on my son. He sees school as a hostile situation and fears being attacked daily. The only thing helping him is knowing Mr. T. is there to keep him safe. Those are his words. You will make a vote tonight that will have no effect on you, but it will impact all of us.
30 seconds.
This merged school's success will fall on the shoulders of the principals, the teachers, the staff, the students, and the families of these schools. There is so much that you will negatively affect by voting yes that the only positive thing that you could do is give the principals what they are asking for, as well as listening to the teachers and making sure that specialized staff like John Chaconis remain in this merged school. Behavioral issues will not go away with this merger. Reed has something that he would like to say to you.
Please make the right choice.
Thank you.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Renee. Kelsey, followed by Robin Thomas.
This is my first grader. Made this sign for y'all to see. I come to you this evening as a married mom of three little boys to ask you to vote no on the Whittier school closure.
We can't allow signs.
And for, got it. As the last 43 days, myself along with an amazing group of parents have been writing emails, sending letters, doing interviews, attending listening sessions, researching grants and ASTER funds, passing out flyers, making signs, creating a petition with over 360 signatures as of right now. Forming an event with over 50 people walking four miles in the rain last Saturday. And then, talking to anybody who will listen to us as where we think that the mergers of these two schools is a terrible idea. I know that each of you would do the exact same thing if you were in my shoes because this directly affects my children, and you would do the same thing if you were your children. We have been criticized by many, with even people in this room dismissing our real concerns. We have been asked, we've asked the hard questions. And so, I'm going to ask you guys, if you've asked the hard questions, why is, you talk about Whittier enrollment being down, but have you asked why Whittier enrollment has been down over the last decade? Is it in part due to the other mergers that have affected Whittier not going as planned in the last decade? Did this merger cause parents to pull their children from Whittier and leave the school without community support? Is Whittier having been closed to open enrollment a factor? It was said recently by an administrator that Whittier has had open enrollment over the last three years. But then, why has 4K enrollment...
30 seconds.
4K enrollment forms had attendance area-only written on them the last two. Listen, I understand this is a knee-jerk reaction to something that's going on behind the scenes that you're not being forthcoming about. The community feels as though it's being lied to by the school district. Truly, this district appears to know the cost of everything. But do they really understand the value of these children in these schools?
Thank you, Kelsey. Robin, followed by Sarah Harrison. Welcome, Robin.
Hello, Robin Thomas. I did email the board members a rather lengthy letter today. I'm just going to read an excerpt from it. I know it was a lot to toss at you at the last minute. I've been a parent in Waukesha schools consistently since 2006. I live in what was the original Randall neighborhood. Due to STEM, we were redistricted and it became Whittier. Our home now is subject to, in an 11-year period, potentially going to have a third elementary school. I don't have any more elementary-age children. I'm speaking as a community member for a neighborhood that this administration and this board have essentially gutted to promote programs such as STEM. While STEM is successful, it doesn't serve everybody's needs. And it's so important that before you make a decision solely on the economics that seem to be driving this point, you understand the background and you understand the risk to the student achievements that you are considering. This will not be the first school closure that you have voted on. Many of you voted to close Randall and to close Saratoga, and many of those students shifted to Whittier. You were part of the creation of the problems that led to so much of the battle that Whittier has fought over the past decade. Whittier has only recently began experiencing stability after many years of suffering, again, much of which was the product of this administration's doing. Closing the two elementary schools shifted so many students to Whittier. Redrawing the boundaries significantly increased Whittier's already disproportionate number of disadvantaged and at-risk students. There's so much I want to say. You have it in the letter that I sent you. But I will say, for those of you that are on this board that spent any amount of time in that building, you know what happens within those walls. You know the products that happens with the staff and educators going above and beyond for those students. Any amount of time at Whittier, you would see how diverse the student population is. Any amount of time in a classroom setting, you will see how incredibly vital those small class sizes are.
Your time has ended.
And we know that with the merger, they won't have those small...
Thank you, Robin. Sarah, followed by David Wad. Hi, Sarah.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Harrison. I'm the mother of two SDW students. Tonight's agenda includes the discussion of the administrative recommendation to merge Hadfield Elementary and Whittier Elementary Schools. This is labeled as long-range budget planning. And I ask you to also consider the long-term academic effects as you're considering the long-range financial impacts of this merger. In the 2020 to 2021 school year, Hadfield and Whittier had the highest percentage of economically disadvantaged students of any of the SDW elementary schools. They also had the lowest DPI overall report card scores. SDW should consider redistricting our elementary schools rather than combining Hadfield and Whittier. Redistricting will redistribute students across the district. This will have a short-term impact on more students, but it will avoid a much more serious, long-term impact on neighborhoods of need in our community. I have visited both of these schools, and I have attended two of the three listening sessions. I spoke with the people who will be impacted the most, our parents, our students, and our teachers. Excuse me. The most concise statement I've heard...
30 seconds.
...is also one of the most poignant. Why the rush? Why just us? If I were in your seat, I would not vote to combine these two schools. Please take your time and make the best long-term decision for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. David Wad, followed by Michelle Alaska. Welcome, David.
Good evening. In full transparency, I'm here to inform the full board that tomorrow I will be filing a formal complaint against Greg Dietz for violation of board bylaws governing board member behavior and code of conduct. On January 10th, Greg Dietz, visibly sick, attended in-person a facilities and finance committee meeting with COVID symptoms. He spent more than 15 minutes after that meeting speaking with me. I asked him, as we started the conversation, what was wrong. He told me he had a sinus infection. I took him at his word. I'll never make that mistake again. The following day, he reported to the district COVID response team that he had COVID. This is confirmed by emails obtained from the district through open records. This occurred during the Omicron surge. We know that it was highly contagious and that vaccines were ineffective against it. It is implausible, implausible, that Mr. Dietz did not consider the possibility when he came that night that he had COVID. He ignored the most basic expert guidance that we've gotten. If you're sick, stay home. If you're symptomatic, you socially distance, and then you notify close contacts. Mr. Dietz recklessly risked infecting colleagues and constituents. He lied to a constituent about the condition he had when asked that night, and he failed to ensure that all his close contacts from that evening were notified despite being advised to do so...
30 seconds.
...by the district COVID response team. For this disgraceful lack of honesty, truthfulness, credibility, I stand complete failure to act in the best interest of the district. He should be censured and sanctioned by being stripped of all of his committee assignments as soon as possible.
Thank you, David. Michelle Alaska, followed by Stacy Keen. Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening. I wanted to thank Dr. Piasik. I watched the TNL meeting last week, the whole five hours. And you were the only one who appeared committed to the curriculum that's being brought to the district or to your meeting, to your committee. And I appreciate that. I didn't see anybody else on that committee engaging or asking questions or just, you know, pushing for transparency in what was being brought to you. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, you know, I would like you to, someone, help me to understand how removing economics and having two other courses absorb that is going to be beneficial to our students and help them. I am reaching out to various people. Hopefully, that can be helpful. So, that was something else that I wanted to ask. And then, the other thing is, again, with Greg, you know, help me to understand this idea of children that are going hungry. How come that has become such a sudden, big issue with you? I have had the opportunity over the last couple of months to go to various schools. Nobody wants children to go hungry. I don't want children to go hungry. We don't want to hear that children are going hungry.
30 seconds.
I don't understand how the district that you worked in up until last February didn't participate. I didn't hear anything about you, even in August. Nothing about the children in the district that you were teaching in. It was just specifically Waukesha. None of the children are going hungry. I can assure you that I've talked to teachers. I've talked to principals. I've talked to social workers at the schools. There is, if teachers want to get reimbursed...
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Michelle. Stacy, followed by Diane Voight. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening. I'm going to start with the behaviors in our schools. It's absolutely...
It's absolutely horrible. I see it and I hear it from teachers around the district. I am told there's a lack of consistency and consequences for this horrific behavior. Teachers are spread thin, and students who want to learn cannot because the classrooms are out of control. You won't believe it unless you see it with your own eyes, because I never would have. So please spend a day in some of our schools so you can see it for yourself. Next, Mr. Dietz, please stop campaigning in our board meetings. Every question you ask shows you are a puppet. If you were so concerned about all of these things, why haven't you addressed them for all the years you've been on the board? I want to inform the board members that Mr. Dietz found in an open records request, emailed all eight PTO presidents at all of the schools that don't currently have breakfast. He gave them all of your contact information and urged them to email you about how they want breakfast. This is inappropriate behavior and another campaign stunt. Mr. Dietz, your doublespeak behavior on COVID is alarming. You said in your own words that COVID was a 9/11 moment times 100 for you, yet you showed up in an FNF meeting in January noticeably sick just so you could make sure breakfast was on the agenda for
Thirty seconds.
There were many more ways you could have done that, but you chose to make it sensational for your campaign. Next, I want to plead with you about economics. Please don't take this away from our students as a requirement. There is no way it can be effectively covered in the classes that can't, that have a hard time covering what they'd need to regardless, and in a regular year. And if there's one thing I learned from the FNF meeting on Monday is Greg Dietz is a living example
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. Diane, followed by Eric Eiers. Welcome, Diane.
Recent headlines warn alarming number of educators may soon leave the profession. Electoral officials must act now to prevent a mass exodus of teachers and other school staff over the next few years. It reported a staggering 55% of educators are thinking about leaving the profession earlier than planned. Why? Educators are exhausted and under an unprecedented level of strain this school year across the country. Burnout and demoralization felt by educators has grown since 2020. Are our teachers frustrated and ready to quit the profession? I fear they are, with the extremely low subfill rate and the teacher bashing for how they've handled the pandemic. How can you address this issue? The response in the article was higher salaries and additional mental support top the list. Is Waukesha offering a salary that will make our current staff want to stay and attract quality future educators? Are we willing to offer the CPI, or Consumer Price Index, to allow for inflation and higher gas prices? Waukesha has $43 million in our unassigned fund balance. I think it's time to make an investment in the future of our schools that is far more valuable than having a healthy rainy day fund. As reported, our reserves are way above the 15% minimum cushion required by school board policy. Please consider giving our current staff the CPI as a sign of appreciation for all they have done for us and for our students the last few years.
Thirty seconds.
Also, another $1 million should be used to buy time to make the final decision on closing Whittier and merging with Hadfield. Over 350 have signed the petition demanding more thought go into this decision. Six weeks is not enough. That would leave $40 million in the rainy day fund and still leave the district in great financial condition. So please consider these priorities as you're considering the budget cuts.
Thank you, Diane. Eric, followed by Amanda Anderson. Welcome, Eric.
On January 25th, the state of Wisconsin's Legislative Fiscal Bureau announced that there was a general fund surplus of $3.8 billion. Last Wednesday, a letter went out to the state strongly urging them to set aside some of that for school aid. This letter was signed by about 100 local businesses and organizations, including the Brewers Community Foundation and Waukesha Metal Products, and by more than 30 school districts, very tellingly not including the School District of Waukesha. I had hoped that this administration would have joined these organizations in taking up this initiative or doing something like it after hearing about that surplus six weeks ago. I hope someone would have been like, hey, we don't have enough to pay for our teachers, you know, give them a cost of living increase due to inflation or to keep all our schools open. Maybe you can help us out some way. But perhaps my hopes were misplaced. Regarding Whittier and Hadfield, I don't have anything personally to add to everything that's been much more eloquently phrased by other speakers tonight, but I'll just say this: Given our current situation, where this board and administration have produced no transportation plan, no disclosure of which staff will be allocated where, and no indisputable proof of any financial hardship that necessitates this merge, I believe Whittier should remain open. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Amanda, followed by Judith Emerson.
Just before I start, the next two people after me, as you've already seen me do before, are reading my speech after me.
Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you. Good evening. Before tonight, I have come to you advocating and asking you to meet the needs of our delicate population of students as well as the staff, but tonight I come to you as a mom. I have four children in the district to stand beside me tonight: One, who will be entering high school next year and has been a student at Whittier for five years; one entering middle school next year and was also at Whittier for five years; and two who are not yet done with their elementary years and will be directly affected by this merger. I have emailed all of you, spoken many meetings, and spoken personally with a few of you. I would like to thank those of you who have taken the time to not only attend the listening sessions but have taken time out of your busy lives to talk to the parents and the staff that this merger will affect. Your thorough consideration of this decision from all sides is appreciated more than I can ever express. However, tonight I want to talk to those of you who have not given this decision the consideration it requires and deserves. I know that in the last few years, your position on this school board has been filled with a lot of difficult decisions and harsh criticism, but being in this challenging position on the school board is also something that you willingly campaigned for. Being a member of the school board means that you are committed to looking at decisions from all angles and for all students, not just the parts that align with your beliefs or for the students that are similar to your own children or grandchildren. In fact, in the district bylaws board policy, it states that the board will act as a truly representative body for citizens in all matters related to programs and operations. I've attended countless board meetings recently and have watched meetings virtually for years. I felt frustrated and saddened at a lot in the last few years, but nothing compares to what it felt like to sit in the finance and facility meeting on Monday night and hear Mr. McCaffrey ask if there were any questions
Thirty seconds.
regarding the merger of these two schools, and only two people had questions. I simply don't understand how you can vote to close a school and have no questions to ask the administration who is making these recommendations. More time has been given to field trips and board meetings than this has been given to closing of a school. Not only that, but it was not on the Teaching and Learning Committee agenda last week. We were told at the last listening session that the meeting had a robust agenda, and when asked if these things were time-sensitive, like our school closing, there was really no answer. Again, I ask, how is it that closing a school holds almost no
Your time has ended.
time in any of the meetings?
Thank you, Amanda. Eiers, followed by Colin Anderson.
Hi, I'm Judith Emerson. I have students at Butler and Summit View, but I've agreed to speak up for the Whittier parents like I hope they would do if it was Summit View or Butler we were talking about. It's been said by Mr. Como that this decision has been discussed in workshops prior to the announcements, workshops that were not publicly posted on the School District of Waukesha website, workshops the parents and the community virtually knew nothing about. In addition to that, there are conflict in statements from the board about when they first heard about this merger, which leads me to my other biggest heartbreak in all of this, which is transparency and trust. As a community, we have asked twice publicly in the listening sessions if the catalyst for this merger is the sale of the Lynn Home and STEM buildings, which in turn moves the STEM students to Whittier. The response each time to this question was indirect. The superintendents and directors have expressed how we could trust them to care about our children and do what is best for them and will make this new school great, but how can we trust you to follow through with this when you aren't being honest in other areas? Again, this decision affects two of the people here that I love and treasure most in this entire world. We are real people with real fears, fears, and real emotions. We face real things like our kids crying themselves to sleep at night because they don't want their schools to close. Yes, this decision affects you, but not nearly the same way it will affect the 92 staff members and 410 students at these two buildings. I ask you to vote no
Thirty seconds.
tonight and find another way to balance the budget. But if you choose to vote yes, I would ask you to do so carefully and with stipulations in place that address our biggest concerns. Please approve a robust staffing model that will give our kids the opportunity to learn at the same level as their peers in other schools as well as ensure their safety. Approve a busing plan that ensures that all of our students could get to school without financial and physical challenges. Approve the renaming of Hadfield School that will be a true representation
Your time has ended. of a merge. Thank you, thank you, Eiers. Colin, followed by Allison Klinsky?
Approve the renaming of Hadfield School that will be a true representation of a merge and acknowledgement for our students of the loss of their beloved school. Ensure and approve the robust before and after school program that has been represented as a hope to our families. Lastly, for families who need or want another schooling option due to this closer, please reassess school choice and make room at the schools closest to us like Prairie. In conclusion, if you choose to vote yes to merging Hadfield and Whittier, I would plead with you to consider how you can help to ensure that this school is successful for all families in the new attendance area. Give my children and the children that attend these schools the same consideration you would give your own. It is possible to make officially responsible decision while doing what's best for kids.
Thank you, Colin. Allison, followed by Laurel Peterson. Welcome, Allison.
Hello, my name is Allison Klinsky. I'm a sophomore at Waukesha West High School. Discrimination at Waukesha West is continuously increasing. Although it began as just the policy removing safe space signs and pride flags, these policies targeted against minority groups is continuously growing. For example, as soon as the West Gender Sexuality Alliance began hanging posters to advertise the club and holidays relating to the club, such as Zero Discrimination Day and Pan Sexuality Awareness Day, the way the signs had to be approved for being hung changed from just getting the principal's signature on them to now needing to go through the district, which changed the time it takes to get approved from five minutes to nearly a week, meaning that we were unable to spread awareness about these holidays on time. Another example of these new policies that were clearly put in place against minority groups is that now attendance must be taken at club meetings. We understand that parents want to know where their children are participating in school. However, this defeats the purpose of clubs such as the Gender Sexuality Alliance, which is intended to be a safe space for all LGBTQ+ students and allies, including ones who are in the closet and can have their parents know about them attending these meetings. This endangers the safety of closeted students. This policy was only implemented once the Black Student Union and Gender Sexuality Alliance of Waukesha West began to bring in speakers in order to spread awareness about the cause they're representing. Allowing students to anonymously attend these meetings creates a safe space. We all know how your policy was intended to make the whole school a safe space. You say that we're not allowed to hang safe space signs because the whole school is supposed to be a safe space. However, you continuously
Thirty seconds.
go out of your way to prevent the safety of minority students in school. For months, students have been attending these meetings begging for equality and justice in schools, and we are continuously being ignored and worked against. Please look into how these policies are affecting students and how claiming that the whole school is a safe space is only increasing the amount of discrimination and hate in school and realizing the mistakes that are continuously made by enforcing these policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Laurel, followed by Mr. or Ms. Goodman. I can't quite get your first name, I'm sorry. Laurel, welcome.
Thank you. So earlier tonight, we heard from some students at South High School and also from Saratoga STEM Middle School, and I think it was clear to all of us how much pride those students have in their schools, as they should. That's their home for all of these hours during the day, and that doesn't just extend to middle school and to high school. It happens at the middle school or at the elementary school level, too. And that's why, when it comes to Whittier and Hadfield, that closing any school or merging any two schools should always be your absolute last resort. Now, you may have considered other options other than closing a school, but this process was done in so much secrecy that we don't know that. We don't know what other options you had and if this really was what had to be done. And if it did have to be done, why was the timing so rushed? Why was it not announced until after the school choice window was closed, which would have allowed families to potentially choose which school their child might go to? Why was redistricting not considered instead of a merger? There's so many barriers to learning for the students in these two schools. There's a lot of talk about low test scores, and I'm not sure how you think low test scores are going to be improved by putting the students who struggle the most
Thirty seconds.
all in the same building unless you have extra considerations for extra teachers, extra aides, extra counselors, transportation, and facilities improvements. So please, show us that you care, show us what your considerations were, and perhaps delay this decision until these other things have been considered and you have concrete solutions.
Your time has ended.
Thanks.
Thank you, Laurel. It's Jacob. And yeah, you have great, actually, you have pretty cool letters. I just couldn't get it right away. Jacob, welcome. And Jana, followed by Jana Goodman.
My name is Jacob Goodman. I have three children. One of them is a first grader at Whittier. I oppose the merger out of respect for the stakeholders. Public schools exist to serve society. I, as an individual, derive a benefit from that arrangement, so I believe I have a duty, as do all of us, to participate, not only through taxes and other financial means, but also, excuse me, through our time, and also by attending neighborhood schools. I know a lot of people disagree with me on that, and that's quite okay. Nobody in my neighborhood sends their kids to Whittier. Everyone chooses out to other schools. I get along with them just fine. I am, at best, of average intellect and comprehensive skills. I've spent the better part of one Saturday and a couple of evenings trying to get a handle on what's going on with this merger. When I look at the catchment lines for the proposed merged school, they stretch from the Fox River downtown all the way up to Town Line Road. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, especially when compared to the boundaries for other schools. Furthermore, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that the burden of a move that benefits the district at large is being borne by such
Thirty seconds.
a small portion of that district. As I said, I've spent a little bit of time, the most I can spare, trying to understand this stuff. These questions, from what I can see, have been responded to, not very well answered, and it's leading to a lot of mistrust amongst the stakeholders, people here talking. So I urge the board to vote no on this subject to give the administration another shot at doing it.
Your time has ended. Thank you, Jacob.
Go Blackshirts.
Jana, followed by Kurt O'Brien. Welcome, Jana.
Good evening. I'm going to start by reading a letter submitted to me by a parent at Whittier. She was not able to be here tonight. My name is Christine Entalipit. I have two children that attend Whittier Elementary, and I just wanted to voice my concern and in support to save Whittier Elementary. I was unable to attend all of the listening sessions because I had to work. We live literally two minutes from Whittier, and it is so convenient for our family for pickups and drop-offs. Also, not to mention, I have a freshman at South, and he can pick up his siblings when needed as well, since he does not yet drive. I believe we live approximately six to 10 minutes from Hadfield, and changing our commute even from two to six to 10 minutes is a big difference for us. I know Hadfield is a lot closer to Carroll and the post office, and that area is always congested with traffic and cars, and they are always on the go. I can see my road rage happening already. I love Whittier. It is our neighborhood school. All of the staff are amazing, and Brandy Hart is really one of the best principals. What is going to happen long-term to all of our teachers and Mrs. Hart? We're going to pack all of our children in another school, and what about class sizes and especially trying to divide the teachers' time between more students? I feel like it will be at least 30 kids to a class if we were able to, if we end up combining. One of my kids has an IEP, and I am mostly concerned about this. He does need a lot more attention, and I'm worried what will He does need a lot more attention, and I'm worried what will happen-
Thirty seconds.
...when the two schools are combined. And just a comment from me, I watched the meeting on Monday at FNF, and I was kind of floored by this time and nitpicking spent over a survey that was used about implementing breakfast that you guys voted on nine months ago or whatever. And the care and consideration that went into that survey, yet you guys are going to close Whittier Elementary in six short weeks. We just ask for more time, more consideration to address a lot of different concerns.
Your time has-
Thank you, Jana. Kurt, followed by Paul Reese. Welcome, Kurt.
Thank you. First, I want to say Sharon Thiede is wonderful. I still have some time to say that. Don't want to miss out the last second. I'm not here to tell the board how they should vote. I know how hard these decisions are, and I assume every board member will make the decision, if they make the decision tonight, based on what they think is best. I am here tonight just to clear up a little something that I heard at FNF regarding the fund balance. I don't know if all board members had a chance to watch FNF. There was a suggestion that the fund balance, the unrestricted funds, is only $9 million. I've created a lot of paperwork, and I've given copies to Sue to distribute to board members. Your own documents clearly say the unbalanced, the fund balance that's unrestricted is $40 million, and it's very clear that that's the case. To say it's $9 million is just wrong. And I really think, I hope the business manager will correct that tonight, make that clear through the documents I presented. I also have, all together, it's three pages. It's not out of the norm to plan for a deficit. In fact, you guys have planned for a deficit the last two budget years, and in both cases, you plan to cover that through the fund balance. So it's not like asking to use a little bit of a deficit to keep a school open is out of the norm. So I just want to make it clear through these three documents that no one's asking for anything unusual or anything this board can't do if they choose to.
Thirty seconds.
I'd just like to say that when we make these decisions, they're life-changing decisions for the district and for the families. It's not something we should do on a whim. It's not something we should do in a non-transparent way, and we should really take the time to do it right. I've talked to Wasby, I've talked to the DPI. The budget that Darren's putting together is accurate.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Kurt.
Anyway, thank you for your time and good luck.
Paul?
I'm also leaving a map here in case anyone wants to-
Thank you, Kurt. Paul, followed by Marilyn Granger. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening. The best judgment of Greg Dees, Bill Baumgart, and Amanda Medina Rowdy, with their hybrid program, they left our students like this. Number of students failing, one class or more in 2019 at Waukesha North was 54, and in 2020, thanks to their hybrid program, that number rose to 292, an increase of 440.7%. In 2019, Waukesha South had 135 students failing one class or more, and in 2020, that number rose to 387, for an increase of 186.7. In 2019, Waukesha West had a total of 74 students failing one class or more, and in 2020, that number rose to 268, for an increase of 262.2%. I've been here, come in here for a little while now, and I've seen other schools close. We've gone through this before, and we've split up. I think Blair was the last one, and we split it up where some students went here, some students went there, and the main complaint was you're breaking up our friends. Our friends aren't going to be together. How can you break up our friends? At what level does enrollment have to fall before it's okay to close a school? It would be a logical question to ask these people. If it's 20%, then do we close it? You know, 50% isn't enough.
Thirty seconds.
I have, my kid moved out of there, I moved my kid in second grade, I moved him, that's traumatic as a parent. I get that. Nobody in here wants to close a school. I don't believe anybody does. I'm a parent, I moved as a kid. I know how traumatic that is. I don't believe anybody wants to do this. But another thing I have a problem with is keeping two principals. When we could go to one and have more people, hire more coaches, and that for in-classroom help.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Paul. Marilyn, followed by Dave Richman. Welcome, Marilyn.
Hi. I want you to know I practiced this for three minutes, and now I'm in trouble.
Sorry.
So I'm going to read something from a Wisconsin newspaper. Terry Wu, she wrote it in, and it's about changing public school curricula, and it kind of goes along with removing sexualized books from schools and the fact that Judicial Watch through information lawsuits have found embedded in teacher training across the board, something called Equity Agenda, which is AKA Critical Race Theory. So no public school system is charged with providing anything but core academics to our children. Sexual introduction, race theory, LGBTQ have no place in the public schools. Public school teachers are charged with providing academics and academics only. Any public school teacher or school board member who thinks or acts otherwise needs to resign, be fired, or be voted out. When my child exits 12th grade, I expect them to know how to read, write, add, and subtract, and perhaps learn a trade school. I don't want them to be worried about politics. I want them to focus on economics. And everything else, I'll handle as a parent. So what does equity-
Thirty seconds.
What does equity mean in the Waukesha school system, and how is it practiced? Are students treated differently? Would one student be treated differently based on the color of their skin? I hope not. That would be a bad travesty. So part of equity is gender identification and sexual orientation classes, which none of us are very happy about.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Marilyn. Dave, followed by Amy Menzel.
Before the clock starts-
Welcome, Dave.
...I'd like to bring a point of order. It's pretty funny that you talk about rules, yet, Mr. Como, you broke your own rules. There's no censorship. Nothing is being done. You stepped out of line the other night, and you also had the opportunity, there are a lot of speakers, but there's a lot to be said. It would never, any one of these board members could have put a motion forward to extend this to three minutes, which would have given the chance. But that would be inconvenience to the board at this point. Oh, by the way, you guys claim, oh, we're all about transparency and all these key items. You're really not. In February, contracts were extended for our administration. The same administration who can't seem to figure out why $325,000 is not important. Or why we're rushing to get the schools done. Oh, but we're transparent. All members of the board, oh, we're transparent. You find reasons not to give food out for a program, and your bull answers about not getting food with the SSO program is an embarrassment. The fact is, contract was done, however it's done, two-year contract extension, but yet we're just going to not ask questions about $325,000 from federal, which does not affect the local tax base, not one cent. It's an overwhelming program to deal with some of the potential situations that we're here. But not, no board members seem to have any passion towards this. We have other political issues we'd like to discuss. Oh, come to us and ask for money. You have a vision of Waukesha? It doesn't match the constituents. You ran for office. You can't just decide, I'm just going to vote how I'm going to vote. You're running for school board. This action seems rushed, and we're going to find out shortly why this was so rushed. Plain and simple, there's-
Thirty seconds.
-real crap going on because there has not been any enforcement of any of the rules. But yet tonight, Mr. Como, you decide you're going to enforce rules. There hasn't been enforcement of rules at all. Can't even enforce your own rules. I think what needs to be done is I'm calling for a public investigation with recent actions because the school board has failed in their responsibilities to monitor implementation of the SSO program in violation of federal-
Your time has ended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Amy, followed by Katie Randall. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Students don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. Many, perhaps most of us, have heard this saying before. Certainly, we've felt this truth. Mind, you care in this sense isn't referring to the amount of care we have for a subject matter or test scores. It's about how much we care about them, not as students, but as human beings. Wonderful, amazing, talented human beings with their own unique experiences and perspectives. Makes me smile just thinking about all the incredible individuals I've come to know simply because they've ended up on my roster. It's my awesome responsibility, and my privilege, really, to support and guide these young folks, to help them develop skills that will help them go on to lead happy and fulfilling lives. It's awesome because, well, teaching and learning are awesome, but it's also awesome in another sense of the word. It's daunting. Teaching is hard, and it's been much harder this year. It's been said that wonderful things are happening that don't require safe space signs. I agree that wonderful things are happening, and this is despite the lack of support we're showing all students. It shouldn't be like this. As a school district, as a community, we should support one another. Instead, we're creating obstacles and barriers. Instead, students are questioning how much or if we care. Folks, I'm not saying you don't care about students. I presume we all care deeply about students. What I am saying, and what you need to understand, is that directives-
Thirty seconds.
...put in place are harming students. I can attest to this, and I won't sit back quietly and continue to watch it happen. My high school band director used to say, if you're not helping us, you're hurting us. And at the time, I thought that was a little dramatic, but maybe it really is just that easy.
Thank you, Amy. Katie, followed by Vincent Duter.
I'm going to finish some words in the email from Robin Thomas. From a taxpayer standpoint, we should all be frustrated by the irresponsible planning and spending in terms of our facilities. Saratoga and Randall both served a large number of disadvantaged and at-risk students. Both were closed as old, outdated neighborhood schools and soon thereafter received significantly facility improvements to accommodate the STEM programs. Yet just a few years later, our administration sought to close those updated facilities with the hope of relocating STEM to yet another building to be updated to fit its needs. Where was the fiscal responsibility in planning? Why should we expect any different outcome with this current merger? Whittier Elementary, one of the oldest facilities in our district, just this past year received substantial improvements, including an actual handicap accessible entrance. Up to that time, if a family had mobility needs, they had to enjoy their students' events and programs with the only access to the gymnasium through a janitorial room. This was a huge and long-sought-after facility enhancement to Whittier, now realizing it potentially was only to be enjoyed and utilized for one school year before being utilized by STEM or maybe the next occupant of this building. It is almost as if the district had a plan all along to use referendum funds for Whittier, but really as building enhancement for the future occupant. This pattern of this administration has repeatedly shown a lack of support of our city's core neighborhoods. By voting yes to this merger, this board will have closed three elementary schools in one area-
Thirty seconds.
...of our city in just 11-year period, all while providing obvious benefits, attention, reinvestment in the STEM program. STEM, as wonderful it is, is not for all students, and you are responsible to all students. We are now seeing declining enrollment in our STEM schools, closing two schools that accommodate STEM only created a vacuum of turmoil. For the schools absorb these attendance area, meaning Hadfield and Whittier, before you vote to close Whittier, consider how the district and this administration have acted and almost intended disregard-
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Katie. Vincent, followed by Leah Pena. Welcome, Vincent.
Hello, I'm Vincent Duter, Waukesha resident for almost 15 years, actually living here, not just pointing to my parents' local address or something. I'm a parent of a student currently enrolled at West. It's now been seven months since the anti-inclusion actions that started last summer. Regrettably, I don't see any signs of actual progress. Yeah, sign, pun intended. As I asked last time, can the board help to do something to counter this anti-inclusion edict from last summer? Unfortunately, I suspect there may not be enough board members who believe inclusion is the right thing for our students to actually hope the board could try to do something. I would hope that those that are quietly siding with the superintendent could consider some of the following. Whatever end of the political or socioeconomic spectrum you're on, I believe we all want our children to succeed, first in getting a good education and then a good career. Good careers will come from good opportunities and successful companies. According to Forbes article, not just me saying it, the bottom line is that any organization needs to embrace diversity throughout its ranks if it wants to attract and retain new talent that will help provide long-term success. I also believe it's the right thing to do, but even if you don't, consider that it's the smart thing for business, and at some point, our children need to be comfortable in a diverse and inclusive environment. Additionally, just like employees who perform better when they feel included and don't have to hide who they are at the office, so will our students. Our Waukesha businesses will not be able to attract and retain diversity if their kids can't go to a school that respects and values them.
Thirty seconds.
At a minimum, teachers and staff need to be allowed to display visibly or however that they respect, value, and respond to individual differences. If that sounds familiar, that's part of our policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Leah, followed by Lindsey Fleck. Welcome, Leah.
Thanks. It's important for administration and the school board to acknowledge the necessities of LGBTQ kids and minorities because they need it. By taking down signs that acknowledge them for the reason that they're political, their existence is politicized by you. In addition, without having the safe space signs in the hallways or the pride flags on the walls, it's ambiguous whether queer people know if teachers will help them when they're whispered about or called names. But with those signs or flags there, there isn't any doubt, and it sets everyone at ease, specifically us. It doesn't matter whether you say the school is inherently a safe space because it doesn't reflect in your actions. After all, actions speak louder than words. The state of things is not really okay.
Thank you, Leah. Lindsey, followed by Kristin Jackowitz. Welcome, Lindsey.
Hi, Beth. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. As limited as the opportunity might be, I am grateful for the right to speak freely. I have to honestly say that I am discouraged by the lack of response from all but two of you to conversations I have tried to begin. I'm confused at the simultaneous rush to pass through mergers and $5 million teaching and learning expenditures and the slow responsiveness to concerns regarding equity bullying and open conversation. I am frustrated by the echo chamber I've witnessed here because of the lack of authentic listening to ideas that come from places other than school district leadership. I am tired of doing the dance of power with you. Like the rest of the community that this district is supposed to serve, I speak when and for how long I am allowed. My ideas and questions, and those of other individuals in this community, are acknowledged but not authentically heard. Many of you make the decisions that you do based on the advice of the people in power in this district, and most of those people have not taught in a classroom in a great number of years. You say you value teacher voice. Why is it then that teachers do not have input on teaching and learning recommendations, except those reported and filtered through departmental directors? And why are the only teachers who are given extended opportunities to present to you chosen by administrators? You say you value student agency. Why is it then that the only students who are given extended opportunities to present to you are the ones who don't openly disagree with your policies and confirm that things are going well? You say you want to listen to the community. Why is it then that you don't respond to emails, either at all or without more than acknowledgement, no pursuit of understanding? I can take a survey. I can speak for three minutes. I can attend listening sessions. I can seek out ways to attend your-
Thirty seconds.
...talks and keep coming to you on your terms. Public institutions like school district exist to serve the needs of the community in which they are located. Without a relationship to that community, how can you say you are doing that? Without seeking a deep understanding of the experiences of those that is failing, how can a district say it hopes to improve?
Thank you, Lindsey. Kristin, followed by Autumn Gillian. Hi, Kristin.
Hello. Good evening. First, just thank you to the board, all of you, regardless of how many years of service you've been a part of the board. I really appreciate all your hard work because as we sit before a lot of families and know that there's a really difficult decision on the table, whether that's tonight or not or in the future, I don't envy you having to make all these hard decisions. So I really appreciate all that you're doing for the community. And I just- And I just wanted to bring a situation that happened recently. I have students at South, and as some of you know, that we are a Christian family. We have raised our kids going to church and participating in any Christian activities that we can get them involved. And we were elated when there was a faith-based organization that they got to be a part of in the elementary. And recently, at South, they now have a fellowship of Christian athletes that my kids have been able to join, and I'm really excited. I love that kids all have groups that they can be a part of. I was sad to hear, though, that several of their friends chose not to participate in this particular group because they felt that some of the other groups of students would judge them for participating in a Christian group. So I hear the things that the other students have said, and we want all schools to include all kids. We want schools to be inclusive environments, but I think we need to be aware of things kind of going both directions at this point and making sure that there's not judgment either way, whatever groups that kids are choosing to be a part of. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Autumn, followed by Samuel D'Amico. Welcome, Autumn.
Hi. Ready? Can I what? Can you share this part? Angus, and I'll share this part. No, this is your speech. We don't have to read together. Can you get up here? Sure. Okay, ready? Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, if you don't want to go, then we can. Um, hello. Can you step up a little bit so they can hear you? Yeah. My bad. Um, hello, my name is Autumn. Can you help me? Hello, my name is Autumn, and I do not think Whittier should close. Kids shouldn't have to walk that far to get to school. I walked 1.8 miles from Whittier to Hadfield and 1.8 miles back from Hadfield back to Whittier. The walk was okay for me, but it would be hard for a little kid. I'd feel bad for a five-year-old kid who have to walk almost two miles to get to school, and it's not good enough for such a small body. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Autumn. Samuel? Welcome, Samuel.
Good evening. My name is Samuel D'Amico, freshman at South High School, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the Whittier closure plan for three reasons. I attended two of the three listening sessions, and we were told by Principals Mike Elliott and Brandy Hart that, quote, "English phonics would get more time and math would change," end quote. Administration did not bring this closure plan to the teaching and learning agenda despite the change in two key aspects of elementary curriculum. No board member here is aware of any curricular changes that will occur other than what we were all vaguely told, English phonics would get more time and math would change. Number two, this process has been rushed. This was put on the finance and facilities agenda for March 7th, only two days before the closure. Despite three listening sessions and the Board of Education being aware of this recommendation by administration since mid-July, January, although that number has varied, Monday was the first time this had been on any agenda for the school board, two days before all of you are asked to vote on it. Well, that day has come now. I'm asking all board members here to understand what this vote means. Due to the lack of a transportation plan, this vote means the difference between children going to school and staying home. What do I mean by that? Whittier is an elementary school with one of the highest student absentee rates in our district. Do we really expect children to come to school when it's being made even harder to get there? This vote means understanding the instructional aspects of this plan, which none of us do. I'm sorry, but I have no idea what it means when we are told math would change, and I doubt any of you here understand it either. The instructional, cultural, environmental, and human aspect of this plan has been ignored by administration, so let's talk about what they are prioritizing. Finances. This plan reportedly will save the school district Waukesha $900,000. Yet that's before the low-balled $350,000 projected cost for upgrades and repairs to the Hadfield building. We've been told our district is in and is heading towards a $7 million budget, and we've been yet to hear where the rest of the money is supposed to come from.
Your time has ended.
Thank you, Samuel. Appreciate everyone's comments tonight. We'll be moving on to our minute approval. There are three minutes, sets of minutes for your consideration. February 9th, a regular board meeting. February 22nd, detachment hearing. And March 8th, executive session for an expulsion panel. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Montiel. Is there a second?
Question? Can I?
Please sit down. Please sit down.
I cannot speak?
No. No, please sit down. We're in our board meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Any discussion? Okay, so will you please take the roll call vote?
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Liam Baumgart.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Moving on to our communications and Waukesha Education Foundation report, Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. First, with communications, I am pleased to announce that both Waukesha North and West have been awarded the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for Boys Swim. So I certainly want to congratulate Mr. Schley, Mr. Lemieux, coaching staffs, and our student athletes for their efforts in earning that recognition. It's very nice. And I'm also happy to do the Waukesha Education Foundation report. Both Mr. Montiel and I serve on that board and are happy to. The board met earlier this month, and the WEF grant window opened on February 14th, will open, excuse me, I should say, on February 14th, and close on April 8th. Teachers and staff, did open, excuse me. Teachers and staff in the school district Waukesha are eligible to apply, and information is available on the WEF website under the Grants tab. WEF has been visiting with schools to offer additional support and answer questions of teachers. The 16th Annual Golf outing will take place on August 4th at the Ironwood Golf Club in Sussex. Golfer registration will open in April, and we're seeking sponsors now. Check out the WEF website under the Golf tab for more information, and please also share and save the date, see the Share and Save the Date flyer that was provided to you at your places. They've already sold, we've already sold, almost $6,000 in sponsorships but have more available. We are pleased to welcome back the following annual sponsors who have already committed to renewing in 2022, and we also have four more pending that are due by April. The ones already committed are GE Healthcare at the platinum level, Metal Tech at the gold, Aurora Healthcare at the silver, Citizens Bank silver, Davies Orthodontics silver, HNI silver, Shoemaker &amp; Gilson silver, Waterstone Bank silver, Waukesha State Bank silver, Whitfley silver, Findorf gold, and SPX at the gold level. And WEF is celebrating 20 years of supporting teachers and students in 2022. We would love to secure 20 new annual sponsors in light of that momentum and momentous occasion. Please help us reach that goal by sharing your contacts or making an introduction. And if you have any contacts that are interested in annual or event sponsorships, you can email Lynette or call her at extension 1143, which would be a district number. So thank you, Mr. Como.
Thank you. It's good to see the sponsorships continue to increase. That has been something relatively new, I think, to the Waukesha Education Foundation the last few years that they introduced, and thank you to all those that support this wonderful organization. Appreciate it very much. Moving on to our charter school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
I have nothing new to report this month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, which is our long-range budget planning discussion and presentation. This does include the administrative recommendation to merge Hadfield with Whittier. Just want to maybe frame it a little bit before we get going. We are in the process of developing the budget for next year. As you do at your homes, you review your income and your expenses, and we all go through that process of figuring out what we can afford. And that's what we're going through right now as a district. As a matter of fact, this takes us the entire year for us to plan for next year. And most of that is reported out at the FNF level, and most of that occurs at the FNF level, but sometimes we bring things to the full board level, not just rolling up through FNF. So tonight, we're going to start out with a presentation. Dr. Seibert, do you want to kick things off?
Absolutely, Mr. Como. Thank you. That was a great introduction. We're very happy to be able to talk to you about both long-range budget planning and the proposed merger of Whittier and Hadfield. We're going to be, it'll be Mr. Clark, Dr. Cook, and I starting the presentation. We'll then be joined by the two principals, Mr. Mike Elliott from Hadfield and Mrs. Brandy Hart from Whittier. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clark to get us started.
Thank you. The first half of this presentation is the financial background. We also presented the slide deck to FNF on Monday night, so for those of you who watched FNF, it looks familiar because it is. But we thought it'd be good for those of you who couldn't watch FNF to hear what the district's looking at fiscally over the next few years. Has been talked about in some of the statements earlier, this is really an enrollment-driven conversation, and enrollment has been going down district-wide since 2012 was our high year. The Third Friday People Count for Resident Students was 13,143 students, and then last fall, we had dropped down to 11,316 students. So that's a quick snapshot of total district resident enrollment. We do have studies done on a regular basis, and this is a few slides. I just pulled excerpts out of the summaries of those studies, and they are on the district's website for anyone who wants to read the studies in total. But I'll summarize them. Our model suggests, this is applied laboratories out of Madison, they work with or through UW-Madison. Our model suggests that there will be a decrease in total enrollment at a state level for the foreseeable future. In the near term, the majority of the decline will be at the middle schools, while at negative 5%, while elementary school enrollment will decline slightly less at 4.5%. High schools, and what you're seeing here in their comments, this is the high schools will increase by 2%, but then begin to decline. These smaller classes are just now reaching our high school level, and that's why I think the biggest drop in their study is being seen at the middle school because those classes are just hitting the middle schools and working their way through. We also have a study done for the district in particular, and they have four different projection models that they use. And in their statements, in summary, say that all four projections show decreasing enrollment for the foreseeable future. The study goes out to 2030, and these studies have been very accurate in the past. We've been using them at least since 2015, so I consider them a pretty reliable source. Again, elementary schools are likely to see the enrollment decreases in the near term because of the driving factors behind all this, declining birth rates and families waiting to have kids longer and kindergarten and declining kindergarten enrollment. But middle schools will likely see the most decline. Again, I think they still have some of the big classes that are now moving through there, so on a percentage basis, their decline will be bigger. So just a quick summary, as I mentioned, we've lost 1,827 resident students since September of 2012. That's 14% drop in resident enrollment, and the projection is looking to continue at least through 2030, and that's all the further our numbers, our projections go out. This is our actual revenue limit calculation that's from our projection model that we use. The top couple of lines show the three-year rolling average of enrollment, and you can see that enrollment has dropped over the last couple of years from 12,311 to 11,000, or projecting 11,515. The next couple of lines, public school education funding is mainly a, how many resident kids do you have? And then the district or the state authorizes how much revenue authority you have to generate through state aid and the local property tax levy. In 2020, 2021, the state biennial budget allowed for an additional $179 per student, but in the current biennial budget for the current year and then for next year, there is no increase in per pupil revenue authority for the school district or any school district in the state of Wisconsin. The reasoning behind it, if I had to guess, is the influx of ESAR dollars. I think, in particular with the passage of ESAR III, the state level saw an opportunity not to increase our funding on an ongoing basis. So those zeros, you multiply no increase in what you're getting per student, and then the fact that we're having fewer students in our schools leads to a bigger deficit than what we have normally seen the last few years. So at the bottom, in the 2020-21 school year, we had a $130 million revenue limit authority number, and for next year, we're looking at $126 million, a loss of, from this year to next, of $3.4 million that we need to come up with. So as I mentioned before, our deficit for next year is larger because of this significant drop being the primary cause. This slide shows you the next four years after, so '23, '24 out to '26, '27, two more biennial budgets. I'm assuming that the state will increase funding to $150 per pupil in each of these years. We won't know that until that biennial budget process is done, but we're looking at another $2.3 million of revenue limit authority. So the conversations we are having is really about how do we become a district with, that used to have $130 million of revenue limit authority, dropping down to a district that more than likely will have around $125 million per year in just a few short years? What steps need to be taken to make that possible? So just to kind of summarize, the school district of Waukesha, I was looking at a budget deficit between seven and seven and a half million dollars for next year. And then hopefully, this doesn't sound right, but recurring to what we've been used to, a three- to four-million-dollar shortfall, which we've been facing for the last several years, and we've been handling administratively. But the more you do that, and over the longer period of time, the topics become more difficult. And I think that's where we find ourselves tonight. So again, primary factors behind all this is declining enrollment, historically high increases in the cost of doing business. The CPI is twice of what the average has been for the last decade or so. How do we cope with that? And then the no increase in per pupil funding at the state level for this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So this is an attempt to kind of show you what we do as a board and what we've done, or as the board does, and I assist in that process, is the, it's the gap between the growth in revenue and expenditures that this really comes down to. And the orange line at the top of this kind of triangle shape that's formed is our expenditures, and I estimate, this is a hypothetical, but it's pretty close to what our actuals have been, I shared several months ago with the board. Expenditures growing at 2.5% each year, revenue growing at less than 1%. And if we did nothing, our expenditures would grow with that bolder orange line at the top of this chart, and revenues would grow at the blue line at the bottom of the chart. And that's if we did nothing. So obviously, you can't have deficit year after deficit year and expect a good financial outcome. So what we've done is every December or so, I do a projection for the following year. And really what we're doing is saying this, you know, our current budget's the base, and then we apply these percentages. We identify a budget shortfall, which we've done again this year. And then the red lines pointing down is that we, either administratively or on larger topics like a school closure or employee compensation or health insurance, the board may take action on those. We make budget adjustments to lower that expense curve to match the blue line. And then the next year, we do the same thing. You have to apply that 2.5% increase in expenses, you're only getting .75 in revenue, and you go through that process. Again, we identify a list, the board acts on the things that are larger in nature, and we do it again. And that's why I referenced this as our instructional or our structural deficit. It's there every year. The bulk of our costs is employee compensation. We're a service industry and with employees comes an inflationary factor that we address on an annual basis. So hopefully this chart helps lay that out. So we've proposed the following plan to balance the '22-'23 year and the board has not acted on any of these topics. The first one is one we do every year. So it is a budget cut process, but it's just a rightsizing of staff because if there's fewer kids, there's fewer sections and we need to adjust our staffing to meet where our actual enrollment is. So we're projecting that 10 teaching staff would be eliminated or reduced through that process, just again, fewer kids in our schools. Health insurance, we are making it our goal and our goal to find a plan to come up with no increase in health insurance next year. We normally budget a 5% increase and then we work down from that to balance the budget. But this year, we said, no, let's have health insurance be flat and that will save us 830, almost $835,000. There's the school closure, which we estimated the savings to be at 935,000. The final number of that is, depends on what the final staffing plan ends up being, what's the final enrollment and those types of things. But the potential to save that $935,000 is there. As I mentioned, CPI is historically high, seen a significant increase. The board needs to decide, what are we going to do with salary adjustments for all district staff? So this is just one thing, again, that the board has to work with and identify and finalize before we can move forward. The next two are really maintenance project funding through our operational. I know the wording probably sounds a little weird, but that's essentially what we're doing is saying, well, we'll spend less on our capital maintenance and that's about $500,000. We've already eliminated one clerical staff position at the service building or our maintenance building. We would also eliminate one maintenance position from the service building. We would eliminate one and a half administrative positions. We would eliminate 10 5.75 hours per day or equivalent positions of instructional aides. Aides work all kinds of different hours, so we kind of come up with a number to reach. So that's why that, again, that description might be a little strange. Central office budgets, the business office, technology, pupil services, e-achieve and teaching and learning would all be reduced. Pupil transportation, we would reduce three routes, a savings of $150,000. Staff assignments or overloads to have pretty much your secondary, high school in particular, staff work overloads, but I don't know if this one's going to come to fruition or not. But it was an idea that we had to, again, go up with $100,000. We are using several sources of one time, or a couple of sources of one-time money. ESER, we would use these two items put together and they don't have to be coded, particularly December school projects, threw that out there as an example. We would use over a million dollars of ESER funding to simply balance our budget. State funding, it says state funding, but really this was part of the COVID response on the federal level. The governor had been allocated a pool of dollars himself that we will receive $133.72 on a one-time basis, so it's one-time money. And I'm saying, let's divide that money over the next two years to help balance both budgets because we know we're going to have budget shortfalls in each. So it would be $783,000 per year to expend and then those dollars are gone after two years. Lastly, the grant allocation for flow-through went up, so we can, you can charge indirect costs of 6%. That's a savings of $200,000 as well. So that's our plan to balance the '22-'23 school year. But as I mentioned, several of these items still need final okay from the Board of Education. Now I'll switch it over to Dr. Seibert to talk specifically about the merger.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So we'll just introduce this, Dr. Cook and I, and then we'll turn it over to the principals. So the next slide is just a review of what Mr. Clark just talked about. So we're in a different position. We're beyond the three to four million dollars that administratively we're used to coming up with. And so we are in that seven to seven and a half million dollar deficit area based on what Mr. Clark just talked about. And he explained those primary factors of why we're in that particular situation. So in light of that, administratively, we've begun and have been for some time working on the plan that he just presented on how do we accomplish coming up with those kinds of dollars? And when you're talking about that kind of money and you're talking about the attendance patterns that we have in the school district of Waukesha, one of the questions that we started to think about right away was the footprint or the size and number of facilities that we have within the school district. And ultimately, you can call it the footprint, you can call it rightsizing, you can call it a couple of different things. We essentially wanted to think a little bit bigger in terms of if we keep the same number of facilities as we see what the budget is going to look like, as Mr. Clark said, working with $5 million less within the next couple of budget cycles, can we continue to provide the same number of services and programs? We aren't certain of that. However, and conversely, if we reduce the footprint, we are hopeful that we can maintain and we are even hopeful that we can enhance the services that we provide. And that's exactly what we intend to do with this recommendation of a merger. So ultimately, in terms of some considerations that we talked about, and I also want to thank all of you for spending time at the listening sessions. I know a lot of this is review for all of you and that's been just wonderful that you've taken the time. First one was, can we get to a three-section school by combining these two elementary schools? And Dr. Cook will go through the actual enrollment within the schools next. What three sections does, that's three classrooms of first grade through fifth grade, we would, and kindergarten through fifth grade, I should say, two 4Ks we would have. It allows us to have full-time staffing in terms of fied, art, music. Currently, based on the size of the two schools, we travel people and that, while that works, it's not quite as efficient as if we can have full-time people stay at the particular school. The next two bullet points really talk about by putting the students together and putting the adults together, can we better serve both the students and can we create better collaboration amongst the adults working together under one roof instead of in two separate buildings? While we also accomplish the financial efficiencies we're talking about. And then the last three, we will cover in a little more detail in future slides. We'll talk about can a larger school population under one roof allow us to have a more stable before and after school program? We'll talk about what student transportation will look like. And we'll also talk about the school choice option, should the board consider and approve this merger, what that would look like going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over now for a few slides to Dr. Cook.
Thank you. A few months back, we conducted a facilities capacity study. And on the slide, you can see the capacity of our buildings at the elementary, middle and high school level, our current enrollment for the '21-'22 year, school year at the elementary, middle and high school level, and then the variance between the capacity and the current enrollment. You can see at the elementary level, we have space for an additional 1,564 students. At the middle level, just shy of 700, and at the high school level, 845. We do have four buildings right now that are either offline leased or minimally used. Blair Elementary School is currently vacant. Harvey Phillip, HP, is currently vacant. Pleasant Hills School is currently being leased to the Richardson School. And then the White Rock Campus is where East High School and the Waukesha Transition Academy are located and they're currently serving 116 students. But across those four buildings, we have space for an additional 1,040 students. So you can see that we have space for an additional 4,147 students or approximately 28.2% of our total space is currently available. As it pertains to Whittier and Hadfield enrollment, during the, and this highlights a little bit more of what Mr. Clark presented earlier, you can see that at Hadfield in the '11-'12 school year, we had 411 students. During the '21-'22 school year, we currently have 215 students enrolled with space or variance of 196 students. Whittier in '11-'12 was at 352. This year, they're at 192 and there's a variance of 160. So when you put both of those schools together, you can see that 46.6%, there's 46.6% fewer students this school year in Whittier and Hadfield than there were in the '11 and '12 school year. This also then would correlate to capacity, the space available. The capacity at Hadfield, particular to the capacity study that we did, has space for 549 students. Whittier currently has space for 408. So between the two schools, there's space for 957. But when you look at the enrollment this year, you notice that there's only 407 students between the two schools and there's available space of 550 or 57.5% of the space is available. One thing to note about this capacity study, we factored 85% building usage. So we weren't looking at 100% of the seats filled in every period of the day. We did factor in space in that study for pull-out spaces, teacher meeting spaces, et cetera. Like before, Mr. Clark presented a chart that showed our overall district enrollment decline and you can see this as it pertains to Hadfield in the blue and then Whittier in the orange over the last 10 years. Let's turn it back over to Dr. Seibert now.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. So ultimately, the recommendation, as you know, is to merge Hadfield and Whittier and to house that facility at the Hadfield site beginning next school year, September of 2022. We would reopen the school choice program for a two-week period beginning this Friday and running through the 25th of March. We have a slide on that coming up as well. And we would merge the current attendance boundaries for the 2022-2023 school year. Why Hadfield? There's a couple of reasons that we think Hadfield is the best choice. First and foremost, as Dr. Cook just showed you, it has a larger capacity and it also has more space for breakouts, small groups, meetings, et cetera. So with a capacity of 549 students, if we rolled all 407 of the students that are currently at both schools there together, we would use 75% of Hadfield, which would allow us additional space as well as room for growth. We also have an elevator at Hadfield. It's two stories, so that's beneficial for access for both staff and students. And Hadfield is also air-conditioned. Everything except the gym has air conditioning, which would enable us to have successful school in the fall when sometimes it's a little bit warmer, the spring. But then also what we're really excited about and we'll talk about more is robust summer school to really help with some gaps that we see in learning and provide some additional services to students and families. So now, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Elliott and Mrs. Hart. We're so grateful that they are here. They are two incredible leaders and we're very excited about the possibilities of putting the two of them together in leading this school. So in terms of the instructional program and design, I'm going to turn it over to Mike and Brandy.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me through this? Okay. Perfect. Well, I'm Mike Elliott. I've been in education for over 30 years. I was a teacher for 25 and this is my fifth year as a principal. My wife's in education and I got two adult children. So I've been around school my whole life. I always haven't been the best student, but here I am.
I am Brandy Hart. I'm the principal at Whittier currently. This is my third year at Whittier and I came from being a principal for three additional years over in Milwaukee where I was there for 13 years and two years additionally in Las Vegas before I came back to the Midwest. So I am, I also have two kids in the district and so we are very committed to the school district of Waukesha. All right, guys. So we are here to kind of give you guys an outline of what our early vision would be. And the one thing that we did want to make sure that we talked with you about, which we talked with our staff about and our families, is that if we come together, we are very dedicated to make sure that children are supported as are their families.
And so this is kind of the vision that we've come up with, the two of us, but you need to understand that this has come from our teachers talking with us, families. We had families coming to our Hadfield. We talked with several families. I think there was probably 15 total that came. And actually, we've been talking with students as well, too, what kind of experiences they want to have. We've had some recent experiences with our students that have really shown why, what this vision, why it's important for our children. So we're going to kind of point that out as we go through this presentation.
So the first thing we'd like to bring up is literacy. Our early vision for literacy is not to change district curriculum or standards for our kids, but just to increase a little bit more flexibility. For example, if we are seeing readers that are not on grade level by third, fourth, fifth grade, we do want to increase the minutes of phonics in those grade levels. We're not going to veer from grade level standards. We're just going to ask for flexibility in our literacy minutes to give our students what they need.
And then for math, we've asked for a, to be able to pilot a new curriculum. It's called Bridges. Elbrook uses it, West Bend uses it. And what it allows for is it allows for the workshop model. It allows for mini lessons, teachers to work individually with students. But on the teacher end, they don't have to go searching all over the place for resources. They have the resource there. It's planned, it's organized, all the materials are there and they can really worry about addressing the students in their seats in front of them and spend their time planning for the students versus spending a lot of time searching out resources. And there are good resources, but our teachers have made it loud and clear that they spend more time searching for good lessons and things like that. And if they could spend more time on developing self-regulated learners and making students more independent, that would be a better use of their time. So we've listened and we've asked, people have responded and we're going to have this opportunity to try this next year.
This next section is one that we're all really excited about and it's about experiential learning, the learning, the process of learning by doing. This part makes us super excited because what we do want to do, if this merge goes forward, is to connect our learning with a deeper understanding, connecting what we're reading about to what we're writing about, to what we're asking questions about and learning about in our science and social studies. So learning, experiential learning really puts our kids in the driver's seat, they're hands-on, they're doing, they're building, they're creating, they're designing. And this part is what, when we look at our learners and we figure out, like, when are they the most engaged? When are they the happiest? When are they asking questions and not wanting the lessons to end? It's when we're doing things like this. So if you click one more time, one thing that we're really going off of is what's happening in our classroom. Where are we, what are our strengths? And our strengths are when our kids are actually having hands-on learning. What would that mean to us? It might mean providing a little more experience, field trips, maybe going out or people coming in, a speaker. It may provide more inquiry projects and really connecting those. So if we're doing something in science, we want to see that also go to reading, go to writing and really deepen their understanding.
So just to touch on that a little bit, yesterday, our fourth graders went to the Capitol. They got to tour Madison and one of our volunteers that was along with them knew a state senator and the Senate was in session. And when they were done, our kids got to go in and be part of that session and sit down and get their picture taken. And they came back so excited because none of them had ever seen that before. We talk about Madison, we study Madison in fourth grade. They had no idea what Madison was. Now they do. They can tell you what the Capitol looks like. They can tell you what's going on. And so like even in one day, social studies completely changed. And that kind of goes along with Avid and giving our kids opportunities. And we really want to focus on the W, I, C and R and get our kids reading, writing, collaborating. Because as Brandy said, and we all know, you that are in business and people that are out in the world, you know that that's what life is like. You have to work with people and you have to be able to read, write and ask questions. And so that's what we want to develop in our learners and Avid is just a good teaching strategies to get them to there. And our teachers are excited about it. We infuse it into our professional learning with our staff. Today, my staff shared videos of each other teaching and gave feedback to one another. They're collaborating and that's what we want to develop and build for all of our learners in our school.
We see the collaboration becoming a huge asset with a merge. There's two different kind of paths that I want to talk about. And the first one is our actual teachers, our grade-level teams. Currently at Whittier, we have a fourth grade teacher that is solo. We have a fifth grade teacher that is solo. And so we do think that it will help our teachers if we combine and have three sections of each. So for example, if I'm a teacher and I teach So for example, if I'm a teacher and I teach a grade level where I don't have a buddy in my building, I'm planning by myself. I'm reviewing and reflecting all of my assessments by myself. And so I do go to a PLC, a professional learning community, and I talk with other colleagues, but they're not teaching the exact things that I am. And I see a much more collaboration with teams that have a buddy at their same level. They can look at it and say, okay, wow, that test went really, really well in my room. And the other teacher says that I bombed, what did you do? And they learn from each other, and they strengthen the whole curriculum by working together and talking about learning. The next part is our special education department. We do have a larger special ed percentage at each building, and with that becomes staff. So we would have a larger department that would be able to focus on things like inclusion, on things like team teaching. Team teaching meaning a regular education teacher and a special education teacher planning and teaching together within the classroom. For example, right now, we do have grade levels where a special education teacher does have to support 4K kindergarten and first grade, so three different grade levels, where she really is expected to know the content and know what's happening in all of those rooms at all the time. If that individual could then immerse him or herself in one grade level, they would be able to become grade-level experts on the content, what's happening, and work with those teachers on planning for all kids.
So here's a map of Hadfield, and this is the first floor. This is why I want to draw your attention to. On the end of the first floor, we have spaces that are available, that are large and open, and they have movable walls. What that would, I mean, we have our three-section classes. There really is no variances where we can put those. But what we do have the capacity for is on the ends, I think it's room 140, I can't read that far, I need new glasses, but...
This one here, 102?
Those two up there, and then the two down...
105, 107?
Yep. And then on the other side, 131, I think it is, and, okay. So those are large areas, and we would really, both of us would really rely on our teachers, our interventionists and our special ed teachers, as to what their students need and what we could use those areas for. Right now, currently, we have spaces where there's kids who go in a room, and there's quiet lights, there's rooms where they can do movement, there's rooms where they can do push-ups, they can do, you know, when they need that body movement, or they need quiet time, they can have that. So we would really rely on our teachers to help develop what those spaces were for, and that would allow us to do it. There's also a couple of other interior spaces that we're able to use as well. But we're kind of, as Brandy came and walked through, I could just see her eyes lighten up, like, what colors paint we could use and what we could use the rooms for, because she's a lot better at that than I am. But we would rely a lot on our teachers, and they've been asking questions about it, and we just keep saying, if this goes through, we will rely on you to help us situate these spaces, because they're the ones working with the children, they're the ones that know the needs, the parents know the needs of their kids, and those people can all work together to develop that. And then the next one's just our upstairs, which is kind of locked in, we don't really have, we could move our music room up to where that resource room is, which would allow for those open concepts down on the first floor. But the upstairs is pretty much all classrooms. So it's, there's really not a lot of flexibility up there, but we don't need it, because we have the flexibility down on the first floor.
Listened on your screen are some of our partners, our community partners, that work within the walls of Whittier and Hadfield right now. And one of the major concerns when we first entered, the thoughts have emerged from many of our stakeholders, were about our partnerships. Will they stay with us, or will they not want to support us? And we put this slide on there, because every single partner is supporting the kids, and it doesn't necessarily matter, the building that the kids are in, the partners will still continue to support the kids. And then our families are our biggest partners. We, you know, we are so, so happy when we see families that advocate for their school, and when we see families that come in to our family nights and want to be a part of their child's education, in whatever way, shape, or form that looks like. And so that will not change, should we move forward with this merge. Our families are our number-one partner, and they are the reason that we, you know, do see success in our children academically, emotionally, or socially. The families are the first teacher.
One of the things that's kind of neat about this is both of us have started and continued, we go out and visit every one of our families before school starts. We have a map. My secretary, Lori, sets it all up for us. We come together as a staff, I buy them lunch, and we go out and walk shot, we just start knocking on doors, giving them a welcome packet. I know Whittier did the same thing this year as well. That would not change. It's super important to open those doors, listen to families, get their input, and we both feel strongly about that. That's something we're pretty passionate about, each of us. And then, as far as social-emotional learning goes, we've heard a lot about children and dysregulation and coming to school upset, and you hear people talk about the invisible backpacks that kids bring to school. Actually, we all do, like, things that have happened in our lives that we have to learn to overcome. And that's kind of the focus of our social-emotional learning, just how can, you know, it's okay to be upset, it's not okay to punch somebody. It's okay to be upset, it's okay to be sad, how do you deal with those things? And so a lot of what we do, and what we'd like to get going even more, is we talk about zone dysregulation. So there's the blue zone, where you're sad and tired, there's the green zone, where you're kind of ready to go, there's the yellow zone, where you could be excited, or maybe getting a little upset, like, we were kind of both in the yellow zone before we walked in here, like, where you get kind of nervous, you know? And then there's a red zone, where you're like, you know, you're done. And so what we talk to children about is, how do you get to green? How do you get to green? And that's really where, when we talk about social-emotional learning, that's what we talk about. So we try to connect every child with a trusted adult. Sometimes it's me, sometimes it's a custodian, sometimes it's a teacher, it's an aide, our library support person's a contact for a lot of kids, we have volunteers that come in, just somebody that they can talk to when they're upset, or go to. And that's really the focus of what social-emotional learning is in both of our schools, just, we know you have a lot going on, we know there's a lot of trauma, we know there's things you're coming with, how do you deal with it? How do you work with it? And we do not want that focus to change. We would really want to keep that, strengthen that. Our teachers are getting really good at it. They're remarkable people every day in the classroom that juggle so much with our kids and support them, and we do not want to lose that, and it's important to us.
So that is our early vision of what this could be like if we move forward with the merge. So just to kind of review, curriculum that is connected with deep, deep learning. We want the focus to be on academics, and we want to close the achievement gaps that we currently do have. We currently have very, very dedicated teachers and staff members at both buildings, and we are very dedicated to make this work, and to put everything we have into making sure that our students and our families are supported, should this move forward.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Mike. A few more slides, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have as a board. Staffing, so we're basing the staffing at this point on a school of 400 students, and if you remember from the earlier slides, currently, we have 407 students in the combined schools. Once we would go through the open enrollment period for two weeks, beginning this Friday, we would then see what the actual enrollment would be, at which time, then Sharon always does the elementary staffing with all of the elementary schools in April, we would be able to come up with the finalized staffing plan based on total enrollment. But we do want you to know that we've been talking about staffing at this school with the principals for several months, to figure out what it is that we think we need to make this successful from day one. And then I'm going to let Dr. Cook talk about School Choice.
Yeah, so should this plan be approved, School Choice would be opening up on Friday, and it would run for a two-week period of time. So it would open up on March 11th, and it would close on March 25th. As of right now, we have not approved any School Choice movement in the district. So it's important to know that anybody who's applied for School Choice, we have not made any moves yet. So any family that did apply for School Choice, we would be putting them in with the entire pool. We do have a slide in here, Mr. Clark, if you could move forward. We do have, and I apologize, this chart is not bigger, it's a large chart. It does show all of the space availability across our district. So this is part of the presentation. We did show this at Les Paul a week ago.
In terms of the before-and-after-school care, we have, Mr. Clark has talked with the YMCA, Brandy and Mike have actually met with Park and Rec, and Mr. Clark has talked with them as well about possibilities of working with them in partnership to have before-and-after-school care at the Hadfield site. Brandy has applied for a CLC, or Community Learning Center, grant that would assist in funding the program. We'll find out about that grant in July. And we will also investigate if we can't pull something together with some community partners, running our own program as a district at the Hadfield location, to wrap around students and families. And then, one last point, we've also been working with the food pantry to talk about a mobile food pantry concept that could be housed in the Hadfield area. That would be either a twice-a-month or monthly opportunity, starting next school year, where families could get necessary supplies, including diapers, non-perishable goods, milk, food, a number of different items that could be supportive as well, and the food pantry is a tremendous partner of the district. I'll let Mr. Clark take this slide.
Some of the projects and improvements that we would be recommending be done, hopefully, all of these we think could fit into the summer of 2022. Playground equipment replacement, hallway and gym floor replacement, which we've been talking about at Hadfield for some time, classroom technology upgrades, and the PAA system replacement. And again, all of these, especially the bottom three are ones that we're already doing at schools. We hope to get to all the schools eventually and do these things, and it just takes a while in a bigger district. But I do think getting them done this summer, if possible, would be good, if we think that the robust summer school is going to become a reality, because if you're on a longer, more robust summer school program, our window of opportunity to get in there and do this kind of, especially the flooring, that kind of improvement, you're really tightening the window of when we'd be able to accomplish that. And the estimated cost is $360,000.
So we have worked on our transportation plan. If the new boundaries are approved, we do use a two-mile walking rule. I mean, that is in board policy, it's in state statute, does give us a guideline as to where we begin with transportation for any school. We have reviewed the area to address the unusually hazardous conditions that could be in the area. We have proposed that any student living west of West Avenue in this attendance area would be a bus student, just due to the walkway to school. Any student, I should say, most students, south of Sunset, there's one little neighborhood where we have a crossing guard, but anybody south of Sunset would qualify based off of distance. And we have a couple of pockets in the neighborhood, we did show that at Les Paul, a couple of pockets in the neighborhood, the Hadfield area, where busing is being provided. When looking at the numbers, currently this year, we're transporting about 95 students by bus through both pay-to-ride and qualified transportation. Next year, we would be at about 150, 560 students would qualify for bus if everybody moved over. We will review this again, if this is approved and school assignments are made, we'll be able to figure out exactly who is going to be on buses. And we're also proposing to reduce our pay-to-ride rates. The standard pay-to-ride rate for a family that does not qualify for free and reduced lunches is $260 a year. We are proposing maintaining that rate. But for any family this year that is receiving reduced-priced lunch, they're paying $195 a student. We're proposing to reduce that to $130, which comes out to about $3 a week. For any family receiving free lunch, this year, they're paying $130. We're proposing dropping that down to $65, comes out to about $1.50 a week. And then for any additional student who would be on the bus, that would be $35 for an additional child, regardless of which school the child goes to. So this is the update to the transportation plan, based off of our listening sessions with families.
And then the last slide we have is just a review of the timeline. You've seen this multiple times, three listening sessions, the first one in the beginning of February at Whittier, at both Whittier, and then on Valentine's Day at Hadfield, we did staff listening sessions at 4:00 p.m., and then our parent and community sessions at 6:00 p.m. And then our last one was at Les Paul on February 24th. There was just one session at 5:00 o'clock for parents and community members. Overall, we were pleased with the attendance, thought it was great. We had about 100 people at Whittier, we had about 60 at Hadfield, and we had about 45 at Les Paul. So we have come now to the end of the timeline, and that's where we find ourselves now, ready for our last slide, which is questions, and between all of us, we're happy to answer anything we can.
What questions do we have? Mr. Martio.
Thank you. I guess one question I have is regarding the totality of the budget balancing plan. I noted in your presentation that there was a reduction of 1.5 administrative positions, netting in a savings of, I think, $175,000. I would like to see a much deeper cut. If we're asking, you know, schools to be merged, and families, and teachers, and everybody to make such sacrifices, I would think there must, there's got to be more things we can cut in the administration to offset as much as possible. So now I'm putting you on the spot. I'm not asking for a specific response today, but I'd like to see a greater cut to the administration. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bongberg.
Not a question, maybe, but just kind of where this, it's hanging with me, and that is, I really like the plan. I have no problem with it. What I've seen there looks like a lot of good stuff to do. I believe in it. But there's other things that are bothering me, and that's all the ifs, offs, ands, buts, and stuff like that, that are behind things. And, you know, and we, it's evident that there's going to be some future plans changed as we get into the next year. You've already heard people talking about the STEM buildings being moved or closed, and stuff like that. We've talked about people, people have talked to us about redistricting, and maybe that's something in the future. And I guess it troubles me that we got into this fast, and I think we did get in fast. I remember when we talked about this back in November, December, I says, that's pretty short notice, and backed off on it, because you're confident it's going to be okay. I'm not confident it'll be okay. I think there's issues here that we have to be dealing with. We've got a lot of people that are upset with it. We have to listen to the community. Yes, we have to a good start with the program. I really think the program in place is going to work, but there's just too many, again, ifs, ands, buts, and so whats around there, that right now, I'm not, just not real comfortable with this. It's just a statement.
May I ask our two distinguished guests questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Fantastic. I just want to thank you both for coming, and I want to thank you both for the amount of work that you have obviously put into this, to this point. I have reservations, I think we all do about this merger. The one thing that has helped me is talking with the two of you. Your optimism seems to be contagious, and I do appreciate that. I think, I think you two are a wonderful asset to the district, and so I have a lot of confidence, having spoken with you on this topic. And so, a couple of questions are, how long have the two of you been, in other words, how long have you known that this is a possibility to merge the two schools? And so then, how long have you been working together towards the potential of this actually occurring? How much time has that been going on?
Thanksgiving-ish, I would say? Thanksgiving time?
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
At this point, is there any benefit for the two of you? Do you need more time? And would that benefit you? And would that benefit you? The words, this is being rushed, and I think, I think a lot of us feel that, you know, from the community, that that's the sentiment, and I'm not saying that's wrong. What is your opinion on that? If I may put you both on the spot.
No, it's...
I guess my question, let me frame it a little bit different. If, given today where we stand, is it beneficial for you to have more time? Is it less beneficial, and why?
Well, I can just speak for my, you know, one, one challenge of having more time is it would be hanging over the teachers' heads for longer. Like, that's been a challenge for our teachers since they found out. Like, they just kind of want a decision made, to be honest with you. One thing that I will say is we've been, Brandy and I have both been very supported by administration, so we've gotten some four-hour chunks of time coming up, where they're going to come and help cover our buildings, so we can actually have some time together to be together and plan. We do a lot of planning on the weekends. We talk, we text back and forth. We do, you know, we talk, we do meet once a week on Tuesdays. So we have been working together and planning, and we've both been talking with our staffs. So I feel comfortable with the amount of time we have, given that we have four hours every other week, that we can just be together and not be interrupted. Will be very helpful for us. I'll let Brandy speak for her.
I think that time is the million-dollar question right now, and I feel like I've been asked that question frequently. And I just have to go back to however much time we get, we're going to make it work. We're going to work together. We're going to plan. We're going to talk with our teachers. I understand the feeling of heaviness right now, of like, I'm not sure what's happening. And I feel like a lot of people feel that. And I don't know if it's good to have that feeling for a whole year, knowing that it will happen the next year. I'm not sure. I don't know. I just, I just know, like, we're going to make it happen with the time you give us to make it happen. That's not a good answer, but I'm just, that's my answer.
Thank you both.
Yeah. We're both very willing to just make whatever is chosen a success, because we care about kids, we care about the people that work with us, and that's how we feel. So we'll do whatever it takes.
Ms. Roddy.
Thank you. And this question's for administration. Dr. Severt, could you explain what the redistricting process looks like? Either time-wise, cost, how much work, what goes into redistricting?
Well, I might need some help from Dr. Cook on that. I've never actually redistricted a district. I mean, it would be a major undertaking in terms of looking at what makes the most sense. So I'll let him talk about that. One of the reasons I can tell you we didn't look at it in this particular instance is because of the enrollments of these two schools, because of the similarity of these two schools, and because of the vision that we have of stockpiling the resources under one roof. If we redistricted Whittier, for example, I don't know how we have the level of support that we can harness by putting these two schools together and having what they both talked about in terms of the power of collaboration under one roof. That's, that's what excites us about this particular possibility. But let me let Dr. Cook talk a little more specifically about redistricting.
Yeah, if we were to look at redistricting, we would be looking first at the elementary level, where we have currently 13 buildings. We would look at all elementary-age kids across the district, and we would be looking then at the boundaries associated with that. So we have software that puts the address where the kid lives on a map, and we can see then about approximately where the boundaries are. We'd be comparing that then to our building study, and then we would be reassigning kids accordingly. So if we wanted to do the 75% or the 85% capacity in the schools, we would be shifting kids from their current elementary schools to other elementary schools. We'd also have to pair that up then with transportation. We would have to look at where those boundaries would fall within the two-mile, and who would be walking, and then the impact that that would have on a, on our unusually hazardous transportation study, which identifies schools and walkways and pathways to those schools. So it would be, it would be very involved. It would be, it would encompass first the entire elementary level, and then it would require shifting kids from school to school potentially, as we made those boundary adjustments.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgart.
We did do, Amanda, we did do some of that, my gosh, maybe 15 or 20 years ago, when we had some balance issues between, like, Rose Glen, Bethesda Prairie, and maybe another one or two. And we moved the kids, but they didn't have to move necessarily that year. Some of them were finishing at a building and wanted to stay there. Sometimes with, if, and there was something to do with you, if you had a brother or sister coming into that, you know, there were things like that were going on, so it wasn't cut by an axe that you're going to go to that building at a certain date, because there was a little bit more humanity to it than that. But other than that, it's pretty much what it amounts to, is we, you look at all of the buildings, and you see where you can make some balances that make sense. And we have, as you look at our map, we have some of the craziest situations with the way the government is spread out, from, you know, north of, almost, well, north of the interstate, down to south halfway to Illinois for some of those buildings.
And that does, Mr. Baumgart, does make a good point about, you know, for families that are currently in a school, their siblings coming up, you'd have to have some parameters around grandfathering, if you will, as to who would be allowed where. And that grandfathering then does have an impact on potential future school choice, because that could dictate, you know, available space for families that wanted to access things, school choice. So for instance, one child is in the third grade, another child is three years old and going to be entering kindergarten, you know, I'm sorry, four-year-old kindergarten, that's going to have a domino effect for years to come if you do redistrict an entire elementary level.
Mr. Dietz.
First of all, a question for Mr. Clark. We heard tonight that our unrestricted, unassigned fund balance was $40 million. Could you confirm that or add to that?
Yeah, I believe it's 43.
43, okay. And it's my understanding that that fund balance could be spent on anything allowable from what would be considered a district need?
Yeah, the board has discretion over fund balance.
And that our board policy...
Most fund balances, there's a couple categories where it's, it's like a couple rules, but yes, in general.
Okay. And that our board policy states that we should have a fund balance of at least 15% of our total budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it puts a range, ideally, between 15 and 25%, which we fall within.
Okay. Okay. And then, I just have some comments in general. I think this plan is assuming quite a few things. That most Whittier students will end up at Hadfield. That there will be three sections of each grade level. That all depends on enrollment. That parents will not apply, not apply for vouchers to a private school. We don't know staffing. I'll tell you one thing, if I was a principal of one of these schools, and 30, 40% of my staff went on the voluntary transfer list, and I had that many new teachers coming into my building, that would be an overwhelming task, to train new teachers with a new population of students and staff that do not know the district or do not know the curriculum. Let's see. Transportation is a concern for me. I did walk the distance from Whittier to Hadfield. I think I'm in average shape for my age. I think I did okay walking that. I couldn't imagine walking that as a kindergarten or first, second-grade student, especially on a day, you know, when it's 10 below zero, unattended, pouring down rain. 25% of this combined school would, 25% of the students would be special education students, which professionally I worked with for several years. That is an incredible percentage of special education students for any building, and I doubt that we could find one anywhere in our area that would have a percentage close to that. And then, I think the progress, despite the progress that I think that has been made at these two schools, especially over the last few years, because I've heard great things, I think you're making really good initial steps. But I think we've yet to figure out how to best meet the student needs at one school, let alone trying to combine two schools. And until we could do that, you know, I would not be in favor of that. There's also no guarantee that the achievement gap reduction grant would be renewed, or the daycare grant would be approved. You know, I wonder, you know, hindsight, you know, why have we limited enrollment to Whittier over the last few years? Maybe that should be something that should be looked at. I doubt that the number would be 200, based on everything I've seen and heard at Whittier over the last year. I bet that number would be quite a bit higher. We talk about our budget deficits, but then every year, we have a budget surplus that we add to the fund balance. I just have way too many questions and concerns. I come from experience by being a principal and a teacher, and with all this uncertainty, I cannot support the merger of these tools, of these two schools at this time. I think, you know, if we looked at having, it's studied for a year, in the past, we've had what we've called an enrollment management committee that was under the direction of the Human Resources Committee that oversaw this, and that was able to take a look at the whole district and make solid recommendations and give us all time to look at that. I think that would be the best way to go. And I'm not saying a year from now, this board wouldn't be here looking at the same situation, but I think it would have been fully vetted, fully studied, and I think the recommendation coming forward would be better understood and better accepted by more people, not only staff, but also members of our community. Thank you.
So Craig, there was a lot in that. Do you, if there are maybe some answers to some of, I mean, there were, it was comments, but there were a lot of questions. Would you want to have administrators address any of those?
They want to, if anything that they want to address.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Cobble, and thank you, Mr. Dietz. I'm happy to start. Maybe start with the teachers. So at this particular point, there are 24 teachers, regular ed teachers, between the two schools.
Right.
In the three-section model, we would need 20. So almost all teachers would, would move over. We do have four Whittier-Hadfield teachers that went on the transfer list, so it actually works out perfect. And we have every intention of finding a position for everyone, regardless of where everything shakes out. We'll have enough attrition via retirements and resignations to, to find positions for everyone.
And would that be regardless of population of students? Or is it dependent on the student population?
Well, certainly, somewhat, it's dependent on the population of the students, yes.
Okay.
Yes. The AGR grant, to my understanding, is approved and would move over. Is that correct, Brandy?
I talked to the representative that helps me with making sure my paperwork is in and everything for the AGR grant. And how she described it to me is that there are, I'm probably going to get it wrong, 141 schools that have the AGR grant within the state of Wisconsin, and that number won't change. Our school district has one. We would never have two or three. We have one. So if we want to move the contract over to another building, that is allowed. She told me that it happens with decisions like this, so that, because that was, that was a fear of mine initially, but she said it, it would transfer over, a contract, contract transfer with a new school building. And then, she explained more about how it works with money, and each year, it's different. They get 100, $1.9 million, and they divvy it out, so your building gets what you get based on the number of low-income students that you have, and so that number does vary a bit here and there for every school that has the AGR grant. So she did not make it sound like to me, on my call to her, that it would be denied because of a merger.
Do you know if the state looks at a district's fund balance when they determine that grant? If you have a large fund balance, would that maybe sway the state in picking another school or district? We're not sure.
I do not feel knowledgeable to answer that question.
To my knowledge, they, they don't take them away. They just don't, and they don't give out any additional ones beyond the 141. Let's have Dr. Cook talk a little bit about the special ed number, 25%, as well as the limit on enrollment, if you could.
Yeah, so Whittier has been open to school choice for the last three years, and I've been working with the enrollment department on any school choice requests. So for some perspective, for many years, we had Butler, and Whittier closed the school choice due to attendance area students. Year after year, I did get requests for students to go to Butler when it was closed. People put appeal paperwork in. I never received a request to go to Whittier when Whittier was closed. Three years ago, we did open Whittier up to choice, anybody who wanted to select to go there. I can't speak for certain how many have accessed it over the last few years. When I looked at the request numbers going into, I believe it was next year, based off of what had happened in the first school choice window this year, there were no families choicing, no new families choicing into Whittier going into this year. And I believe in years past, it's been one or two. So there was no appeal requested, but one or two in the, in the past couple of years since it's opened up. The special ed department at Whittier, the proposed special ed department that would move over to Hadfield, would be the same-sized special ed department that we have at South High School right now, that's serving nearly 200 kids with disabilities. So with the 10 special education teachers, plus the number of aides that we would propose to allocate to the building, you'd be at the same size that South High School is going into next year, with approximately four times as many students.
South has four times as many.
Four times as many. So there, there are nearly 200 Whittier, the proposed Whittier, first cross-categorical need is going to be in the mid-50s. So hence, you know, that's why we're proposing the staffing level.
And I guess I can just say personally that I've been in that situation, and I could tell you honestly that there's never been enough special education staff support within the school that I've been in, based on a given time. You never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, and every year, you look at the IEPs, and you try to figure out what the right number of staff is.
Right.
You know, when you're one to two with staff to student ratio, when you're one to three with staff to student ratio, one adult to three kids. My experience has been consistently, from school district to school district, that that's very favorable. It matches how many districts are staffing theirs. Districts that aren't in our financial situation, districts that are in worse, they're trying to keep it at that at the elementary level, and that's what we are meeting here.
And I'm just saying, you know, just from my own experience, that there are times when a few students can take away from a lot of other special education students, and IEP minutes are not being met.
And that is the case, you know, with, with one teacher at each grade level, and kids start to escalate, that certainly becomes the case. When you're proposing 10 special education teachers across six grade levels, you are able to create systems so that kids who are demonstrating behavioral needs are able to be tended to by a teacher, while the co-teaching of literacy, math is still happening by another teacher who doesn't have to get pulled away.
And maybe my, maybe my experience is different than others. I'm just giving you my, my opinion on that.
I didn't remember all the things you went through, Gregory. Are there others that you had, that you wanted to have addressed?
I think that, I think that covers it.
Okay. Fair enough. I didn't, I'm not trying to force you to say or ask anything in particular, so. I just wanted to make sure things... I just wanted to make sure things got answered for you, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. We like these late meetings, huh? Thank you both for being here. And I first appreciate that you both, administration, teachers, parents, all have spent a lot of time answering my questions. I wanted to just maybe follow up on some of the themes that Mr. Dietz spoke of. So as I've approached this, I've thought about the different categories of things that we need to be really focused on: staffing, learning, behavior, transportation, and culture. And I think where I've heard the most from, well, I mean, feedback from parents is spread in all those areas, and I think appropriately so. Everybody's experience is different, right? Sometimes transportation matters for one family, sometimes behavior and culture matter for someone else. And so, you know, I don't know that we're going to hit all five for everybody. I do appreciate that there's been a plan that's been discussed in each of these areas, with maybe a couple of exceptions. So for me to be confident with this decision, I need, I need to be able to expect and not hope that the vision can be realized. And what I've heard from the two of you is that you have the support and the resources from administration that you're asking for. Do you still feel that that's the case?
I do, yeah.
I know that the bridges component is budgeted in the, or at least planned in the Essor Plan. The staffing piece is there. I understand that there are plans to have a full-time psychologist and a full-time social worker. I think the literacy piece is something, Brandy, you've demonstrated especially at Whittier already, that you're accelerating the good work there, and I think that translates very well to Hadfield. The staffing side, the question I have, maybe as a result of what Mr. Dietz raised, do you, do you anticipate in talking with your staff that they will stick with this plan? What's your, what's your sense for, is there going to be a mass exodus, or do we have people who are committed to these students?
I can speak for Had, the teachers that are at Hadfield, they're, they're excited about this. These ideas came from them. Like they, we've, so we've got a few pockets of classrooms that are doing inquiry, and yeah, there's some stress about bringing two schools together. I mean, everybody feels that. But as far as like the learning and the teaching, they're excited about the possibility of doing this. They want, our students that are doing inquiry right now and are doing these hands-on things, they're accelerating, they're growing leaps and bounds. Our second-grade class has taken off, our fourth-grade class has taken off. It's happening. We can see the evidence of the work. So yes, people are nervous about bringing two schools together. We, it's new. I mean, anytime you do something new, it's challenging, but I can say that people are excited. They, you know, they'll make, they'll do what it takes for children. I can tell you that.
I agree. I agree. I think that our transfer list would be much higher, like we'd have a lot more people if they were all wanting to leave. The biggest concerns I hear from staff right now is moving my classroom. How am I going to do it? When am I going to do it? Am I going to have time to do it? And I think that's valid, and I think that's fair. They want support on making sure that that happens. Another concern that comes up frequently is the name of the school. Will that, will we be able to bring that up as a consideration so that we don't feel like we're just being closed? That we are honored as staff, as family, as students, as partners, as community people working together and making it a true merge? Those are the biggest things I hear from staff. They're thrilled about math. They're excited about the possibility of getting our kids' experiences and bringing it into the classroom and taking them out. They're excited about that. So I don't, I hope that answers your question, but the biggest thing for us is time in packing up and setting up my classroom.
It's the logistics of the, that's probably the biggest stress for the people I talk to as well. Our kindergarten teacher has got all this incredible stuff. How am I going to get it to a different room?
And Mr. Elliott, you kind of shared a plan for that, if I understood at the Les Paul listening session?
We talked about trying to get creative with giving our teachers time to pack and unpack and see if we could combine it with some visits and work through it that way and use some of our community volunteers to run like a field day or something to try to, you know, there are creative ways to do it and to try to take some of that stress off the teachers, because it is going to be, I mean, that's, elementary teachers have a lot of things, and for good reason, but it, and it does stress them out, so. We're conscious of that.
So I think Mr. Elliott mentioned that we have some Thursdays set up to work on some things coming up if this moves forward. One of our first things that we're tackling is like, how do we truly merge our families? How do we truly merge our kids? And how do we truly merge our staff? And with that staffing piece, like it's learning together, it's being together, it's knowing each other, but it's also like figuring out the timeline of that plan and how we're going to support them in the next coming months for the rest of the school year.
I think that culture piece is the one that has less of the structured plan around it, right? We can't say, we're going to implement this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that. I know there's been discussion about the name. I've heard the response from administration. I would like for that to continue to be an open conversation. I've, I've had the chance to talk with families, I've had the chance to meet students as well, and these, these children are very, very capable. And I think the culture that we create, if, if we merge these two schools, is going to be a new culture. It's not going to be the Hadfield or the Whittier culture.
Correct.
I do understand as a parent and also just, you know, that the culture is not necessarily the building, but the building is home for the parents, for the students, for the teachers. And so it's not something that's lost on me or that I take lightly, that we're asking people to leave their home and to move someplace else. Community schools are what communities are built on, and so this is not, it's not, it's not a light decision for any of us. I think you realize that. I think, I think the administration has done a good job in responding to the questions about transportation. I realize that all of our elementary schools, or almost all of our elementary, I feel all, I mean, the two-mile rule applies. I took the walk as well. I understand that, you know, what we will be asking. I did want to ask the two of you, based on the students and the families that you know, if you have outstanding concerns about transportation or what your thoughts are about. You know, obviously, we have to get the children to school in order to care for them and educate them, and so that's a big one. Where are you at on the transportation piece?
I mean, transportation is a concern. That is probably the number-one concern that families have brought to me, and it really is about getting their kids to school. We can't teach them if they're not there. We have done as much as we could do this year in getting our kids a seat on the pay-to-ride. So I was excited to see the decrease in the dollar amount to be able to help kids get on the pay-to-ride bus. They, the transportation department has worked with us to reroute. Last year, we got two different routes, so that did help our families with the pay-to-ride. I know that there are also other families that are concerned with the length of, not even that, yes, I will get a bus, because now I live X miles away, but now that I'm so far from my son or daughter. So I don't know if, if that can be taken consideration for families, too, when they choose and if there are spots at those schools. But yes, transportation is, is still, I mean, we want our kids at school.
Thank you.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. Regarding the pay-to-ride issue, is there any way to quantify what we're looking at to somewhat accurately predict what families would likely choose the pay-to-ride? So we can look at, as an option, if the district would choose to pay for that, which maybe should be on the table, what are we looking at? The goal is to get kids to school, and if family can't afford the $130 a year or whatever, perhaps the district can look into paying for that, or outside groups, PTOs, you know, community organizations can try to help with that bill. Is there a way to get an idea, at least roughly, on what we're looking at?
Darren, do you have?
Basically, a sense of it? I can just tell you what we budget for, if that helps. It's about $35,000 a year we receive in payments from families district-wide.
Okay.
I don't have a way, I don't think we track it down to what school those families attend, you know, to get down into like Whittier or Hadfield in particular.
Right.
Numbers, but that's the overall scope of what you're looking at, pay-to-ride, for, and this plan would pretty much have that roughly, give or take, have that budget down to, you know, the upper teens.
We currently have 18 families between the two attendance areas accessing pay-to-ride.
Okay.
We would anticipate that that would go up if the rates went down to pay it.
Right.
So I can't tell you that we would get another 20, 30, 40, but we are going to be strategic with where we run the bus routes, so that as many families is, could access it by bringing those buses through neighborhoods, we would be able to accommodate that.
Okay.
Because sometimes logistically, you say, well, we have the intersection of College and West Avenue, and that's where the bus goes by, so we'll put a stop there. And some people say, well, I don't want my child to walk three blocks to that bus stop, that they don't choose to access it. We hear situations like that play out across our system around pay-to-ride.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Dietz?
Dr. Cook, at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, you projected a slide that showed the proposed attendance area. Do you still have that with you? And could you project that?
If you give me a minute, I can look for it.
Okay. So if anyone else wants to go ahead, that's fine.
Dr. Piasik?
If I could, while he's playing that up, just a couple of other thoughts that I had in response to what Mr. Montiel said. I, I disagree that we want to have our PTOs paying to transport our kids. I don't think, don't think that's good use of their resources. They're working hard to bring in programming for students, and so I appreciate the point, and I think there's probably other resources. I do think if that cost is cut in half, those community partners who are helping us can serve two children instead of one. And so I appreciate the thought that's been put into that. The other piece is, I agree with you on the administrative budget cuts. I do think, and I look at this not as a one-time savings. Obviously, we're trying to equalize our budget and our facilities. So by having these students in one building, we can invest in one building, we can put the resources there, the physical building resources as well as the academic support But when I look at what we're proposing to take out, there's a lot of small things, and then there are things that are actually going to hit our staff. The way that it's proposed right now, you know, if, if we were to get any closer to meeting CGI, we have to find that money someplace else. And this, this is, it's kind of in the balance. So I do think that we have to look at overhead, certainly administrative overhead, and I think that number has to be higher, regardless of whether or not we do this. I don't know that there's enough there to continue with, you know, 40% to 50% enrollment in our elementary, in some of our elementary schools for the foreseeable future. But I do think that we probably could try to do more.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments, and I don't disagree. Throwing the PTO is just an option. It's throwing ideas out there, not that they should have to pay for it, but I'm just trying to put a number on it. Regarding the elimination of the 1.5 administrative positions, is that the facilities management position that, or is it something different? Something different, okay.
Yeah, the timing of the Director of Facilities, we eliminated that last spring, so it was already adjusted for in this year's budget, so.
Okay.
That's how that, the timing just fell. It never really was on a list, because it fell at an odd time.
Okay. That's what I had hoped. Thank you.
And we're planning on continuing down that road, the restructuring that you had done, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, right now, I'm directly overseeing facilities, and we have two mid-management people, one custodial, one maintenance, so that's the new structure.
Okay. Which is more efficient than what we had, so.
We took that later. Mr. Kombel, Mr. Dietz, the map is up there. Just would point out that this map was drawn out back in, on February 24th, so some of our proposed plans have changed since that. But to give you some perspective, the purple highlighted area is the current Hadfield attendance area, and then the current highlighted red area, and I apologize that it doesn't go down any further, but the Whittier attendance area continues down to Town Line Road. But this does show you where Sunset is. I can blow that up in the middle there. And then it does show where, what is that, 59, Highway 59 is in the orange there. So to give you some perspective, we are essentially everything north of Sunset, with the exception of an area where we currently have a crossing guard, would be proposed as walking, anything south would be proposed as busing. And then on West Avenue, which is, it's kind of all garbled together there, anything west of that would qualify as a transportation zone as well.
And Mr. Clark, would you be able to, give me a estimate of the property tax revenue that we would be receiving from this district in comparison to our overall district revenue funds that we get?
Please give me a minute to bring up that number.
Yep, that'd be great. Sorry. Someone else can go.
You're gracious with your time, Mr. Dietz.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Zenobia?
I do have a comment going back to the beginning. When initially, Mr. Montiel had mentioned the additional cuts, potentially administration, Mr. Baumgartner had said he was not comfortable with some of the things that were being proposed, and he made the comment, I believe, that this merger seemed rushed. Regardless of the outcome of this, I would encourage administration to bring us budget cuts if we are going to look at something of this magnitude over several months quickly, and let us look at some of the larger pieces of it so that we can make these decisions in a timely manner the next few months or over the summer, so that they can, can be front and center and don't get drowned out by any other big thing that we're doing. If we have to close a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit, I would, and it looks like from the proposal, this is the case, but I would encourage us to do that in a way that is equal across as many areas as we can accomplish it without taking away from the services of why we are here, is to educate kids. So just a comment in the time to pull up the next slide, so. Thank you.
Do you have it, Mr. Clark? Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. Just to tack on to what Mr. Zenobia said, I agree. To close a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar budget shortfall is going to be painful. I think the pain should be last felt in the classroom. It should start with the administration and go downward. So I'd like to, I anticipate and I hope for more specific cuts in the administration. It's just, it has to be, in my opinion, that way. Thank you.
Close?
There are a lot of emails.
Okay, gotcha. Other questions? Mr. Zenobia?
Sorry to jump ahead of you there.
Did you raise your hand, Karen? I'm sorry.
I did have a question going back to the issue on behavior, and my understanding has been, from many conversations, that some of the resources in both schools, but especially Whittier, were, I don't want to say lacking, but because of the size of the schools...
Sorry to jump ahead of you there.
Did you raise your hand, Karen? I'm sorry.
I did have a question going back to the issue on behavior, and my understanding has been from many conversations that some of the resources in both schools, but especially Whittier, were, I don't want to say lacking, but because of the size of the schools and how many children were in each school, that we were feeling resources from other areas, and that this merger will allow us to have those resources in one place. I mean, that is what I have taken from these conversations, to be accurate. Can perhaps Dr. Cook or Ms. Landish expand on that a little bit? Is that the case, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to some of it. You know, Dr. Seabert mentioned that we'd be having full-time specialists in the school. You know, currently, people are in and out. When Dr. Seabert and I did listening sessions, we heard from staff, staff at Whittier in particular, that they wish they had a full-time art teacher, full-time music teacher, where those people would be integrated in the day-to-day movement of the school. You know, currently, we're, if people split their day, we're currently, we're paying people to drive from school to school. This would allow dedicated staff in one building. That does add to the school culture. It adds to a level of consistency. And in some instances, it's going to free up more collaboration time for teachers, because the frequency that specials are provided will allow for more teacher PLC time and whatever. We are going to be dedicating the student services staff at the Hadfield Building, the proposed Hadfield merger. So with the psychologist staff there, the social work staff there, those people are going to be dedicated 100% to that building. We're going to be combining resources through title and combining resources through the special ed CEIS dollars. Instead of spreading that over two schools, that's going to be in one location. So those resources aren't going to be parsed out between two schools or in 50% built positions where you don't have your social worker when you need your social worker. That person is going to be there and present. So in that, in that essence, we are going to have that staff there. I think one of the big components, particularly as you mentioned, behavior, a number of students with disabilities demonstrate more significant behaviors. And by having a large special education team there, where you have dedicated staff period by period of the day, that is going to be able to address behavioral needs while other staff are able to teach. And that's the thing that happens in a school where, be it two special education teachers at an elementary school, or five special education teachers at an elementary school, when a student on your caseload starts to escalate, you are pulled from your team teaching assignment to try to address that behavior. In our proposed staffing model, we're not going to be pulling that person. We will have dedicated people period by period that are going to be able to help absorb that. And instead of the minor issues, or even the ones that get to be like kind of a moderate need, there's going to be a staff member there and present who's going to be there to support behavior, to work with the student, to help de-escalate, to help regulate, and get that child ready to learn again and be back in the classroom. Instead of it turning into a situation where Mr. Elliott or Mrs. Hart are running in, you're going to have a special education staff member available to provide that support and that service. I've observed that in larger schools, where you do have the staff that's not dedicated period by period to a co-teaching assignment. And that has been beneficial.
You had your hand up, right?
I was about to, but if Mr. Clark is ready to give that answer.
Oh, you have your slide? You're going to hand it back over to Mr. Dietz? Okay, fair enough.
And this is going off a 2018 property valuation. I took this year's tax rate, but it's an email, so.
Oh, oh, I got you.
On the slide. But just using that, so just so everyone's clear on the data we're looking at. That, those two attendance areas generate $47.5 million of levy dollars. But I want to stress, the merger of this doesn't change our revenue. That property value is still in the school district. It will still be assessed at the tax rate that the board approves. So though it may be interesting, or maybe the valuation may seem high, but they both have a lot of commercial property with them, a lot of home density, et cetera. But I just want to be clear that people don't tie the $47.5 million to some sort of revenue loss for the school district in Milwaukee.
And I guess my point, Mr. Clark, would be that it appears that a lot of schools in our district benefit from the property tax revenue collected by that attendance area.
I would think that happens in most school districts. It's not even by square mile. It's where the property is, where the commercial property is. So I would agree, that's, it's not an unusual thing, but I think the point you're making is accurate.
And we really don't plan around that. I mean, it's one.
Right. Just to give you a point of reference, Bill referenced, we did boundaries 20 years ago, where Target, Buffalo Wild Wings, Panera, that was a soccer field at the time. There's been a lot of housing developments since the last boundaries we're doing. So even if that was your goal, you would pretty much have to re-boundary every few years at a minimum.
What was the, what was the value amount that you shared for?
Property value in the Hadfield attendance area is just over $4 billion, and in the Whittier attendance area is nearly $2.6 billion.
And again, it doesn't really impact our revenues at all. I mean, we have one pot that we bring it all into, and we have X number of students, and we have X number of staff to support those students throughout the year. So our budgeting process, every year, we take all those things into consideration, but we don't really break it out by, you know, schools for that, for that matter.
Ms. Reinschek?
Thank you. I just, I might not have questions, but just how I came to a decision, and I might not have had a lot of questions at the FNF meeting, because I had been asking them along the way. One of those, Dr. Cook, when you talked about the other day, and you might have mentioned it, but I've just been writing, did you, when you talked about the number of special ed teachers that we would have at the new school, you talked about more than, there would be more than as currently at South. Did you mention that tonight?
The teachers plus the aides in this proposed model would be more than what we currently have allocated at South High School right now, yes.
And what significant does that, significance does that have, that we have so many at South?
We have, this year, on our books, we have 195 students with disabilities at South High School. And so the proposed model has about 55 or 56 cross-categorical special education students that would be at the, at the Whittier, the proposed Whittier campus, if I'm understanding the numbers, if I remember the numbers correctly. So with that, we'd be having, you know, a proposed staffing of approximately, if all the kids showed up, we'd have about 18 people working in the special ed department between aides and teachers. In addition to that, we have two speech and language pathologists assigned in this proposed model to cover the students who have speech and language needs, keeping the caseloads for the speech and language pathologists very manageable to handle their service delivery. So we have taken into consideration the special education population there, the need, and then, you know, matching that with the proposed staffing.
Thank you. And I reached out to a teacher at Hawthorne, because we had heard that there was such trouble when we merged Blair and Hawthorne. And from what I've learned about having a dean, if, or a leader that is going to just handle the behavior part, if that's the model, we're going to go with something like that, I heard that this person's job, the whole day is discipline, checking in with students in positive ways. If there's a quiet new student, just asking, how are they adjusting? Talking to the families, it's all, this person's role is just all about the parents, the positive behavior. They have PBIS, school-wide, but not sure if you would have that. Just promoting the positive behaviors, rewarding kids for being good. They have three models, respectful, responsible, and safe. One-on-one with kids, this person is just the person for that. Teachers handle as much as they can, that is possible for them in their classroom, but when they can't teach because of behavior issues, that's when this person comes in. And just even just observing and just try to say, try this, or try that. They are, that is the, just, that is the professional that is dealing with that. Lots of data is tracked every month. There's a walkthrough, e-sale. It's just a different culture than it was in the beginning. And so many of those teachers and staff just stayed and persevered and stuck with it. And it was just, it's different than it was in the beginning, and we have learned from that. So that helped me to know that, what Dr. Cook had said about the special ed. And as far as kids walking to school, all of our schools have the two-mile radius. We have 300 homeless students in our district. We have buses going to Milwaukee, to Kenosha, all over the place, just trying to pick up kids so that they have consistency here. So if there is a hardship, all you need to do is tell us, and we will figure that out, and we will help. My kids came from, they had done redistricting, and so everyone in our subdivision had to go to a certain school that was almost five miles away. That was our neighborhood school, except there was another school that was a little over two miles away. So everyone in my neighborhood, just, there were workers, there were some stay-at-home moms, and we just figured it out. And with three cars, we transported 15 kids to the neighborhood school that, well, the nearest school, I should say, because both of them were out of walking range. And I'm not saying that that compares, I'm just saying that was cheaper than, or, I'm sorry, that was a better decision than redistricting, or else our kids would have been split up in different schools. So when you talk about the redistricting, that means that friends won't stay together. And we heard from someone tonight about splitting up friends. I have some clients who are teachers, and when they have 28 kids in their class, and they know that they're being paid as same as someone with nine, they're pretty upset about that. And we have not had anyone come and talk about that, but that bothers them. So those are a few of the things that were in my mind. Let me just make sure I've got it. Oh, and then as far as busing, or I'm sorry, as far as drop-off, we had 100% of, when we ended up going to the STEM school versus the one of our neighborhood schools that we were at for a while, we had to have 100% of our families dropping off. So if we can handle that in a very small area, I think we can handle anything. And from what I've heard, there are already ideas to make that Hadfield drop-off much easier than it was when people were doing that in the summer. So those were things that I had questions about and sought answers for and feel better about it. No, it's not an easy decision, and we have special ed kids all over our district and in different schools. And so they're in classrooms of 28. And so you're still going to have classrooms that are smaller and much smaller than 28. But I just don't think it's feasible having classes as small as nine and less than a half of the school occupied. So I just don't see any other way, and I feel better about some of the answers that I've gotten. So that's all I have right now.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Okay, we do our next, our next item is rolling into the consideration of approval of the administrative recommendation to merge Hadfield and Whittier Elementary Schools for the 2022-2023 school year. I know it's a lot to ask, but during our, we're moving into our debate portion, but we still may have questions during that debate portion. I know you guys have early mornings, but it's an important point. If you could still stick around just in case we do have additional questions. There you go. Appreciate it very much, very much. So I would open, it's still, it's still discussion, there's potential for motions. I'll open it back, the floor back up. Ms. Roddy?
Thank you. I just want to share some of the insight that I've gained in speaking with staff and others, our hearing from other stakeholders with regards to this consideration. Visited both schools, which is always a pleasure. You do well there. My feel, and I, this could be wrong, but my feel is that a majority of the staff see the potential. I think everybody does, right? I know there's been a lot of discussion about the behavior, and the behavioral issues that, that these schools are working through. I've spoken with both Mr. T and Mr. S, and I've asked them, you know, walk through the schools. They've shown me, you know, while we're walking through the schools, they'll correct a behavior or, you know, I've seen them side by, you know, walking side by side with them. And both of them do see potential. Their concern, one of whom has experienced mergers in his line of work, their concern is just the lack of follow-through on the promises that, of resources. They really, they really, really are stressing that. We, as administration, as the board, need to follow-through on those things, just for them to see this happening. Let's see, there's some other things, excuse me here. There's been comments tonight from our, from our public who have talked about us considering your children the same as we would consider ours. And I, I very much appreciate that comment. I realize that this is frustrating and, and it's a difficult decision for all of us. I'm having trouble just getting the words out of my mouth trying to share it with you, but know that we do, we do, I believe all of us do. When I look at this, if it were my family in this situation, because I have three students in the district as well at two different schools, I, I would, I would take this as a learning opportunity for my kids. As a parent, as we've heard many of our parents speak to us, it's our first job to, you know, we're wanting to protect our children. We wanted to keep them from hurt, from confusion, from all of those things. But as a parent, I also want to prepare my kids for times when life's going to throw them a curveball, and how, how they address it, and how they go forward. And I just wanted to share that point. Some other things, or another thing that I heard, and I'm going to try to say this very carefully, because I don't want to be offensive in this, but there was a comment, and I'm not quoting this exactly, but it says that we're hurting the poor or students of, minority students in our district. It just, there have been multiple mergers in the, not mergers, excuse me, um, closing of schools in this area. And like I said, I'm going to try to say this carefully. Just because a student might fall in one of those categories, doesn't mean that they can't handle the change. Will it be more difficult for some? Yes, probably. And I would like to acknowledge that. I realize that that would be the case for some. But as our parents and our community have proven to us, they will keep us on our toes and make sure that those issues are addressed from the principals, which principals sound like they're gearing up for, the staff, all the extra support. And that's, I don't know, that was just on my heart. I needed to share that. I don't, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the community member who spoke, but I just, I just wanted that to be said. Our parents have, and the community have told us over and over again of different concerns that they have, and like I said before, a moment ago, they're going to keep us on our toes. They're going to make sure that we don't miss these things. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said. And whichever direction this goes, if the schools are merged, I do want to recognize that for some families and students, they're going to feel this is a great loss. And I want to recognize that. And we will do, if this goes through, our best to help cope and get through that and create this new school, if this is what happens. So either I, I just want to acknowledge that those, where families are coming from on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Piasik?
A question, um, for administration, Dr. Seabird in particular. Would, would you commit to monthly updates on the merger at all of our board meetings at, at a minimum?
Certainly.
I think, um, there are still some things that are gray, and that is with respect to resources. And, and what we're hearing, what I'm hearing, I, um, I feel that satisfies some of my concerns, but I want to make sure that we follow through on that. And so I understand that there's still some things that have to get settled based on number of students and the feasibility of variety of options. Um, but I do think that we can't just leave this today, one way or the other. Um, so I think those regular updates would be really important. I would appreciate if there could be updates, even maybe as a regular item in our, in our Friday packets.
Sure.
Um, and then at a, at a minimum at board meetings. That would be important to me.
Absolutely. Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative recommendation to merge Hadfield and Whittier Elementary Schools for the 2022-23 school year.
Is there a second to that motion? Saying by Mr. Zenobia? Discussion?
I just, um, thinking through my notes, I found another note I wanted to make sure. Um, there was a comment tonight on how we're focusing just on the budget and that there's a human aspect to, um, this decision. And, um, I can speak for myself and I, I know there's a human aspect to this. But, um, over the last, um, six years that I've been on this board, we've had decisions that have, um, focused primarily on the student, um, or staff input. Um, parent input has led into all of those. And then there's times that the bu, um, the budget does need to be the priority. Um, always keeping our students, um, in the forefront of those. But sometimes that focus does need to be there. Um, at one of our listening sessions, there was a, a parent that stood up and said that, um, based off of their experience in a different district, um, they had been part of mergers. And the, I guess now that parent recognized that, um, with that merger, they were a lot, um, they were able to keep programming, um, that the, were beneficial for the students. And they reckon, that this parent recognized what the proposal was trying to do, was trying to save programs. Mr. Clark just told us, um, that the last few years, we've been filling a $3 million deficit. And the longer you do that, the harder and harder the decisions and the discussions are going to become because, um, so I just, oh, I just wanted to make that point, that there's many votes that we've made. Um, and this particular one, i- it is required of us to focus on the budget. Um, so.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. Here's where I'm at, and I try to keep this as brief as possible. Um, we're trying to make up a budget shortfall of, what, $7.5 million next year and, uh, three or four thereafter. Um, I don't necessarily think this merger is a bad idea. The amount of work that Mr. Elliott and Ms. Hart have done since being made aware of this approximately around Thanksgiving in the administration, uh, and the plan that's been presented is impressive. As far as the cooperation, um, between the two schools and anticipation of it being successful is impressive. Um, the problem I have is if we're looking at this from a budget standpoint, um, public policy-wise, this is backwards. Um, as backwards as in my mind it could possibly be. What I would hope to have seen is the administration coming forth with a proposal saying, look, we have this deficit, 7.5 million, that we need to make up for next year. We're going to cut administration by this. We're going to cut, um, these other, you know, USF funding. We're going to cut, um, budgets. We're going to cut all these other things. This is as lean and mean as we can possibly get it, but it's not enough. Therefore, we have to look at the last possible thing we'd like to do is close a school. Um, that's how I would have preferred this to have happened. Um, I am hesitant to agree to a merger because I think it disincentivizes the administration, not out of animus or, you know, bad will, from making those other hard decisions. I want those other hard decisions to come first. And then if we cannot winnow down and make up that budget deficit, then we look at the hardest thing that we need to do is close a school. And that's from a budget perspective. I, I am, I'd be remiss to think that we can only cut $175,000 from administration. I'd be remiss to think we can only cut the proposed, you know, 150, 250, $25,000 from student services. I think, as I mentioned before, budget cuts hurt, they hurt everybody. They should last be felt in the classroom. It doesn't mean that this is a bad idea. It just means, in my mind, public policy-wise and taxpayer-wise and student-wise and classroom-focused, this is, this is backwards. So I don't, I don't support the merger for that reason. Thank you.
Just, uh, just to piggytail off of that, the whole 7.5 million dollar list, all, all of it impacts our students.
Right.
We're, 80% of our budget is, you know, service-oriented. We're a service organization. So there isn't anything on that list that impacts our students. It all does, in one way or another. Our administration has been doing about a $3 million cut for the last five years. Okay? All of that, every year, those cuts impact our, our children. So there isn't anything on that list that doesn't impact our children. You might say, well, administration does. Well, there's a lot of federal and state laws. We have to fill out reports. We have to follow all sorts of things. Cut an administrator that works on focuses on that. Are the teachers going to do that? Are the principals going to do that? It all ties together. I don't mean to say it's that, it's, it's very complex. So everything on this list, it impacts our, our students.
Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate Mr. Montiel's comments because, um, I, I do agree, um, somewhere in all my stack of notes here, you know, that I, I wrote myself a note that this, this is not about the money for me. I think the plan is, um, deliberately focused on how we can do the best for our students. Um, I know that, that Dr. Cook is very passionate and feels very strongly about the, the presence of those resources in that, in that aggregate group and that that is better than what we're currently doing and, uh, able to offer the students in the two different buildings. Um, I've asked myself, if we weren't looking at seven plus or minus million and we were looking at two, might we still be having this conversation? You know, I, I don't necessarily, and, and I do agree with you that I would like to see firmer numbers in terms of what actually else we can cut. Um, I don't see this as the decision that closes the gap this year. I see this as a sustainability decision that we need to do to make us whole long-term and also that comes with a plan that I think is well thought through to support students. And I echo a lot of what Mrs. Roddy said too. This, this isn't something that won't be felt and, and be, be painful, I think, for some people. Um, but I've gone through that thought process and I just wanted to respond with that because I, I do agree with what you're saying. Um, if this were like the only way to close it, uh, that would be a different conversation for me. And I think this is, um, it's, it's a, it's a long-term sustainability thing for me too. It, it's not, it's not so much about one thing on the list towards the 7 million. It's something that, year over year, we would continue to have this cost. And I mentioned earlier about just the investment and, and things that we put in those buildings, the ability to do one playground, the ability to do one parking lot, the ability to, um, you know, have one transportation plan. So that's, that's just how I'm thinking about the, the same, the same issue that I think you raised.
Yeah, it, it is a long-term sustainability. Um, appro, we have to, we have to look at the long-term. Um, all the decisions we make, I believe around this table, in our classrooms, I, I think we are all trying to stay focused on the students as much as we can. And when Dr. Seabird started off, um, this whole discussion, one of the things that he said is we can keep the buildings and find ways to cut the programs, or we can find ways to keep the programs and reduce the footprint. So we have, we have a footprint problem. We have too much class, available class space. It was throughout the district, 28 or 29% at 85% capacity. So really, I think, and it, you might not all agree, we need, that approach is keeping focus on the students. It's complex. And it's not easy. It is very emotional. I, I question if this wasn't emotional. I mean, we all, we all love our teachers. We all love our schools. And I believe that this is just not, from a financial perspective, the best thing to do. I think that the principals have presented, it's a very early plan, but they got off and running with fantastic, fantastic plan. We can only take the plan so far until we make a decision at the board level whether or not to, to, to go forward with this merge. And then there's many more details to come. I think our administration has done the best to answer as many questions as we have, um, at this point. Um, and whether we go forward or not with this, we're going to have to continue to study how to reduce our budget, not only this year, but every single year we have to balance that budget and how we're going to go about doing it. We have actually about two, two to three years of very difficult discussions so that we can, we can get things aligned so we don't have to have these conversations year after year. If we can eliminate that structural deficit in two to three years, we won't have to have these kinds of discussions. Now, I don't have a perfect crystal ball. That's the best that we can predict with the numbers that we have now. We do know enrollment continues to decline. We have to address that. We have too much space. We have to address that. This isn't easy. It really isn't. Because it affects our students. Every one of these things on the list impacts our students.
Any other discussion, questions that we may have? Mr. Dietz?
Um, this is for, um, Mr. Clark. It just seems like every year we're, we're cutting our budget, but then at the end of the budget year, we have a surplus that we add to the fund balance. Do I have that right?
That has been the case generally. And we've gotten, and some of those years that you've asked about have been, on a percentage basis, very small adds to our fund balance, meaning we hit our expenditures at about a 98.5% accuracy, which on a budget, $150 million operationally can be a sizable number. One other thing I'd like to mention about the fund balance, though, if you go back to March of '20, when we started making really tough decisions, we laid off 300 aides, we stopped paying vendors. Districts around us kept making those payments. And at that time, we talked about building up fund balance because we talked about the next two to three years being really tough fiscal years. We wanted those resources to be allocated. So I know people are looking at that number now and seeing this pile of money, but if they go back, this was what we had hoped to do because we had no idea with certainty and greater, and we certainly have greater certainty now, was to utilize those funds to help us get to '24, '25. That was the discussion. So, um, I just thought I'd add that because I think to look at a, a number at this point in time without having the context of the conversations that led to it, I think is, um, important.
And I would, and I would agree with all that. Um, however, I think this is a rainy day and I think it would be a good use of money to tap into a little bit of that fund balance personally.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I think we're at the time where we're going to, uh, take our votes. Sue, would you please read the motion?
Motion for approval of the administrative recommendation to merge Hadfield and Whittier Elementary Schools for the 2022-2023 school year.
All right. Sue, please take the roll call.
Greg Dietz?
No.
Karen Reinacek?
Yes.
Cory Montiel?
No.
Kelly Piasik?
Yes.
William Baumgart?
No.
Anthony Zenobia?
Yes.
Amanda Roddy?
Yes.
Joseph Como?
Yes. Passes five, three, Sue. I truly appreciate everyone being here tonight. Over the last few weeks, months, actually, we will continue, um, to move down this path to review how to, uh, close the gap. We heard from, um, Dr. Seabird that we will be hearing regularly on the plan, uh, and how it's going. Um, I know we've been trying to keep as much of that information in front of our public and, and, uh, you know, for the board. So we will continue to do those updates. And, um, our principals tonight, you had a kind of a high-level plan. You're going to be hitting the road running with, uh, to come up with how to detail that out and to bring that collaboration together. And, um, I hope as a community, we move forward and, and really make this a great, a great thing for our, our students. And I, I don't want to underestimate how emotional this is. I, it, this is hard. This is hard, but together we, we can do this. Thank you, everyone. All right. I think we all needed a recess there. Appreciate everyone's hard work. We still have a fair amount left. Um, moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, do we have, uh, any gifts that we need to report out on?
Yeah, five gifts. Uh, Waukesha North High School received a donation of wood from MCS Wood, Woodworking with an estimated value of $2,880 to be used for woodworking classes at the high school. North also received $5,000 from an anonymous donor to be used for drama band and project grad prom and incentives, um, exercises at the school. Uh, the school district made program received $3,500 from Prolic Dash GE Waukesha to be used to update, repair, or purchase new equipment or project supplies. South received $990 from Multiple Listing Service, Inc. to be used for the Waukesha South Strength Program. And Waukesha South Band Parade Incident Fund received $778 from LLL, LLR, Inc. in Corona, California.
Well, thank, thank, thank you. Um, I, every month, I'm amazed at the generosity of this community. It's just fantastic. Thanks for reporting out on that, Mr. Clark. Um, your items include various-
Your items include various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Approval of the, oh, no, the expulsion, is the expulsion panel up for approval tonight or not?
Yes.
Okay. So it was included on, on the agenda that we posted to the public?
It was posted.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that we're, that they were included. So we did have an expulsion last night. That's why I'm asking on the timing of this. We had, yeah, so everyone got a copy of that. And if, if you want to have that set aside, you know, after the open session portion, we do have a potential for a closed session if you would like to do that. There were no policies included in the consent agenda, so at this time, if there's anything that you'd like to have set aside, please indicate at this time. All right, Sue, please take the, or I'm sorry, Amanda, we don't have a motion yet. I need another treat. Amanda, will you please present the consent agenda?
I will. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of three resignations, five retirements, and two leaves of absence. The information was provided in your packet and an agenda was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart, discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye, passes 8-0, Sue. Thank you, Ms. Roddy. I'm moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. Let me just start by saying, I try to tell you several times in updates and various other ways that I really appreciate your commitment and your dedication and the amount of time that you've put in as board members. And you have been, over the last year and a half since I've been with you, just tremendous to work with, and I realize that a lot of the decisions that you have to make are incredibly challenging. So I just appreciate your passion for moving the district forward and your partnership, and just want you to know that we will give you updates consistently, and we will make this school very successful. And I'm very confident in those two principals. We've put a lot of time in already, and now we can really put the time in to make sure that we hit the ground running in September. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. Moving on to our committee reports, as you know, we do rotate those, and this, this month, we are going to start with the Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held last week on March 1, 2022, 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. One action item and seven discussion information items appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. Our one action item tonight is the approval of ESER Learning Recovery Plan. Jody Landish, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, presented the Learning Recovery Plan, which will potentially allocate $5,557,427.12 over the two-year time period. This request, or the request in year one is $3,422,150.30, and this is more than 30% of the required 20% for learning loss. The plan will address the academic impact of lost instructional time, ensure that interventions implemented respond to students' social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs, and address the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on students with low-income backgrounds, students of color, students with disabilities, multilingual learners, migratory students, students experiencing homelessness, and children and youth in foster care. Ms. Landish covered the learning recovery focus areas, total cost allocation, and measurable deliverables in order to impact student growth. On a vote of four to one, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the ESER Learning Recovery Plan as presented. We request board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart, discussion? Mr. Zanobia?
I do have a question. I was able to watch some of the five-hour TNL meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to re-watch parts of, I think we'll comfortably beat that tonight. But anyway, there was some discussion around this being a two-year plan, correct? And that, that can be modified? I mean, am I in the right, am I in the right part here? Everybody's looking at me like I'm crazy tonight. So if we're, if we're trying to approve this, there was some discussion that this could be done on a yearly basis. And I, I get the point of making it two years, a strategic look forward. I think that's great. I mean, three years, whatever. But the ability to tailor this as we go, I think, is very important. So, you know, that would be my question, really, not so much a comment, but a question. Can we easily do that and make this something that is ongoing, but something we can tweak as we go every year?
So all this and every other expense and income item goes through our budgetary process. And so when we're in a fiscal year, school year, we can amend our budget, and we actually do that a couple of times a year. As Mr. Clark had pointed out, actually, we have done very little of that because we've, you know, great to, you know, his team has done a really excellent job of really trying to put together what a year should look like. And, you know, it is a large budget, so you're either going to be above that at the end of the year and put monies into fund balance, or you can take monies out of fund balance, most likely to balance that. So we, we have times during the current year where we can make changes, and we do that every year. So as we're budgeting for next year, which we're in the midst of, these, this is our best guess right now as to how we're going to spend the ESER funds. So we've got that chunked away, so the, the 5.4 million, what was the total? I'm sorry. $5.5 million, we've earmarked essentially so that as Mr. Clark puts together the budget and TNL puts together it, we take a look and say that that's kind of earmarked over those two years. But we have this, for the first time, this ESER fund is, is new to us. So, but, so it's kind of added a little bit of a curve, if you wish, and we've never experienced this ever before. But it really just melds into our entire budgetary process. So in a long-winded way, we, we can make adjustments in, in a current year or in a future year as we put together those budgets. Mr. Clark, would you want to comment on anything else, or Dr. Seibert on, on, you know, how that works?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to speak to the benefit of, in this case, TNL knowing in advance thus far, but the benefits might come from that, because I don't know. But until the purchase order is cut, the board cannot, you know, can say no in the budget process for the following year. But the sooner we know, the better as well. So, I mean, it's really up to your, your comfort level, and it's what I tried to get at when we talked about process a month or two ago, is how, how do we want to go doing this? So from my end, I can do any of these things. The planning and the prep and her planning for the following year, and I mean her, I mean Jody, sorry, that I, that I don't have from answer to.
And, and the board has a flex, I guess, in a really long winded, we have the ability to make the changes if we want to make changes. I think the advantage of this is we have a pot of, what's our total amount of ESER funds?
Seventeen.
Seventeen million. We're carving out five and a half million here. We know that we need to do at least a minimum of 20% to go towards learning recovery. We know we've gone beyond that, so we're at 30%. So now we don't, you know, so we've indicated to administration, we, we would like to do this, doesn't mean that we can't change it, but now, you know, the other 12 or 11 and a half million, we're going to have to figure out over the next two years how, how to spend that, but now we've at least earmarked it. So I view this as earmarking more than anything right now. Dr. Piasik? Mr. Dietz?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I brought up the, the request for the plan. So when we were talking about this last time, I think, I felt that there was just some inconsistency between Ms. Landish having to go to TNL to get approval for, or to FNF to get approval for things that hadn't quite been through TNL yet. And while I understand there are multiple mechanisms to get the curricular resources approved through TNL, and we, we would still hold true to those, the reason I asked for the plan was so that, again, we could, we could budget, we could kind of see what that number looked like, and then we could start to figure out what to do with the rest of it rather than kind of dripping it in as we go. When we talked about this at the TNL meeting, my concern with just approving the plan was that there are some categories in the plan that are quite large, that are dedicated to tangible curricular materials. And I felt that there was some room in there enough that we may decide next year, we've budgeted for some of those things in our regular operating budget, or that we didn't need them, or that we kind of have reevaluated. So I, I just didn't, and this is where I think this discussion is really important, right? What does it mean once we've approved the plan? And how is that going to work with FNF and TNL? Because the intent was not to make it more complicated, the intent was actually to make it easier. So that's where I think some discussion would be helpful because the reason that I didn't, that I didn't support what we voted on at TNL is because I wanted to make some clarification to the year two. And, and I'm prepared to do that tonight, too, but I, but I want to have the conversation first in terms of, you know, how do we want this to work?
And that's what I tried to do a couple of months ago, and it's funny, it's hard, it's hard to get your, and, and there's a part of our FNF, and I don't mean to steal the mic, even though I did, about wanting to report out to FNF as we go, and we have a document in there that will, I'm presenting to FNF just to, as we're talking financially, how much is, I can just hear the question, how much of ESER is left? So I think I've cleared up the FNF side of it unless there's an FNF-specific topic, HVAC or whatever, that would naturally come through our committee. So again, it goes to whatever the board desires in terms of reapproving or whatever.
And I think the phrase Mr. Como used of earmarking, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, too, is that, you know, we're going to kind of protect this amount for these anticipated expenditures, but I'd, I'd like to have a next step when it comes to planning that year-two expenditures.
Well, and, and that's where we'll go through our budget process like we do every year, and we have to meld ESER into that, is kind of how I've tried to explain it. Mr. Baumgart?
So what I'm hearing is there's nothing that stops us from having a review someplace along the way when it's time to look at the, if it's at the year or whenever, when we're planning out what to do with that money, we have, this existing motion doesn't, doesn't interfere with us getting together and talking about it, right?
At a minimum, we will review it through the budgetary process, and we can, again, just like we called, a meeting was asked at TNL, or a, not a meeting, an agendaized item was asked to be added to TNL to give us a chance to maybe take a longer-term, broader view, which I thought was an excellent idea. So we still have the flexibility throughout the year at any time to figure out whether we come together as a board of a whole, or we need to have a discussion because it's more focused on TNL. So I really view this as, we've never been down the road of having ESER funds. I, I want to be as flexible as this board wants to be to cover this, but I, I also want to be strategic about it, and that's what I like about the discussion that we had at TNL. So I'm not, I, I know Darren was trying to identify a couple of months ago where our process would be, and it was kind of like more of a piecemeal sort of, let's bring it up. But I, we wanted to have a broader picture of what that might be. So I, I think we've kind of combined some of that to a certain degree. Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask Dr. Piasik, because you said you, you want to be able to review the second year. If I understood what you were saying at the TNL, and I think I was, but I'll have you clarify, we were discussing the different programs, they all sound fantastic, great potential for the students, but what it sounded like is you had a concern that we're using these one-time dollars for these great programs, and if they succeed, what's going to happen year three? Will we have those dollars budgeted going forward to maintain those programs? Am I correct in that understanding?
That's, that's a big part of it, yes.
Okay.
And that's where I'm going to come back, and I might sound like a broken record. It will go through our normal budgeting process where we can vet those things out, and we can say, this is what we want. Can it be melded into something that we go forward year and year, year after year doing? So like, we always have a bucket for like textbooks and, you know, a TNL bucket, let's say. And there's a couple of different buckets. You might want to refer to the specific buckets, Mr. Clark, but we always have money set aside for our basic operations categorized in a variety of ways. And, you know, to your point, Dr. Piasik, I know when I first got on the board, just those TNL resources, I'll just call it as a category, that was about a quarter of a million dollars. And there were years where it had to be zero. There were years where we had to catch up, and that became three-quarters of a million. You know, so we, we've go through this, these cycles with our normal processes, and I would, I would hope that we would pay attention to these things and make sure that we're looking at that, to make sure we understand what can be supported and what can't be supported. And that's going to be a tricky thing, I think, over these next couple of years as we figure out our structural deficit, how, how we're going to attack that. And, you know, our, our, our vision is, is after two to three budget cycles, we will be able to level off so that we don't have to have some of these tougher discussions. Is that fair, Dr. Seibert?
Very.
And I don't know if I'm helping you, Dr. Piasik. I, I'm not sure.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm just looking at some things in here where we have two years' worth of summer school programming budgeted, and we have two years' worth of dual enrollment program support budgeted, and two years' worth of playworks, right? That was in our budget. That's going to go to ESER. How's it coming back?
Well, some of those things we've already been doing, though.
Oh, that's my point. So once they come out of our regular operating budget, we need to have a plan to get them back in. And what I'm not comfortable with is voting on a two-year plan that says we're just going to push that to ESER without having, coming back in a year and figuring out how we're going to weave those things back into our regular operating budget.
I, I think that's a good point, and I think we can, you know, Mr. Clark's here, we can weave that into our discussion.
It's a great point with anything.
One-time money problem.
It's just like a grant that goes away in two years. You never had the services, and then you add it for the grant, and then you can't live without them. So we also, I just want to make it clear, in our budget balancing plan, we're using a million dollars to essentially balance the budget. We have to go through that same exercise and prioritize those services amongst all of our other services and bring them back into our operational or special education budget, whichever it falls into. So it, it's a, it's a good, long-range concern to have out there because eventually, and it'll be here before you know it, so we do need that plan in place.
Mr. Dietz?
Ms. Landish, I, I believe that along the way, you'd be evaluating some of the programs and the materials. So if in year one...
So if in year one, they weren't being successful, there would be no use in continuing to, you know, order something that was hoped to have been a success and contribute to student learning. I mean, you don't have purchase orders waiting to go out tomorrow for 5.5 million, I assume. So, I mean, I'm sure that you would be looking at that and, you know, evaluating those materials and getting some feedback on those, to see how effective they actually were. Some of those, we already know that they're effective, or a good share of them, I think we already do.
Right, right. I think, yes, I want to affirm that we would always be looking formatively at the student impact to make sure it is reaching our intended impact.
Before it was reordered or resubmitted, or?
Yes, I also, I guess, want to acknowledge what you said, though, as well, is many of these are tried and true in terms of we already have them in the system. We're trying to make equitable the resources at all of our schools. That's one angle.
Right.
But certainly along the way, we'd be able to evaluate as we go.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Piasik?
Including comment, and you might be able to talk me out of this, but I wonder if it would be appropriate to add to the motion that the year-two proposed funds are to be assigned but not dispersed until approval of a year-two plan in March of 2023, or not before?
You could make that amendment.
I mean, I don't know if it's necessary. It sounds like we're going to have those conversations.
I think administratively, I've heard that administration's committed to that, and I know as a board president, I'm committed to that, making sure that this board, at all times, if you have concerns, you know, we, you know, ask to have something be agendized, and we move forward on it. So, you know, and it will naturally come up in our budgetary process, though. It has to. So we will, next year, as we approve the budget, which includes, you know, now we know the Hadfield merger, there's going to be all these $7.5 million worth of changes we're going to have to make. That will be taken back and talked about throughout the FNF budgeting process throughout this year. We'll eventually get to a point where we will show that budget and present it to our public. There will be a hearing that will be held, and we will go through the approval process that we normally go through. We will not have all the details for the budget, just like every other year, till we have our third Friday, September count, till we understand what the legislation is. Actually, this is the second year of biennium, so it makes it easier on us. And we need to understand what our property values, what the equalized property value is. That's always a big one. That affects more the rate than anything, but.
One thing to keep in mind, though, some of these things are more time-sensitive. So I don't know if we can necessarily always follow the budget, like textbooks, I don't know if there's, I'm just using it as an example, there might be a huge lead time on that. So we might need a nod, maybe when we roll out the assumptions, so.
The budget assumption.
Right. We can't wait till the public hearing in September, or, you know, the finance will see the first draft of the budget in July. You know, some of those POs need to be cut prior to that, but I can assure you, because one thing I've been trying to do is make ESRS on the front, you know, out there as much as we can, because I do think we need to, there's a level of reporting that we do, or should do, is part of that, so.
If I could just clarify.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo, so what I don't want to do is approve a plan, and then we're modifying the plan as we're going, because that doesn't help the problem. I mean, if it's, if you're saying we can come back and modify it anytime, then it doesn't really help us to have a plan. If we're saying this is kind of what we're carving out of ESRS, we want to be able to move forward on that. And I could understand wanting to have significant change to that plan, or maybe we realize, hey, this, you know, there's another million or something here that we need, but that was the point of asking for a plan, was so that we weren't just kind of titrating these things in. So, and it's outside of the regular budget planning cycle. Obviously, it affects our regular budget planning cycle, but some of these funds are available to us now, right? We just, it's what we ultimately approved. So we're already approving things outside the regular budget planning process because they're related to ESRS. So then, so then I'm saying, I don't, what's the point of having a plan if we're just going to continue to modify it? Or if we can come back anytime and change it?
So I, I don't mean to make light of this, but we can, we can change anything we want during the year, as long as we haven't spent it for our entire budget.
I understand.
So I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know.
Wouldn't we leave you just complicating everything if we got into such, careful, this, 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 this list? I mean, they offered us some money, let's use it. We haven't been screwing around with this kind of stuff. You know, the administration has done a very good job over the years of managing this stuff. We don't have to have the board, you know, we're there. They've always asked us if we needed, if they needed help. But I think we're just complicating the plan by having a whole bunch of things lined up, this is where we're going to do it. You know, it's nuts. Sorry, that's just what I said. I think we can do this, we have all this exercise.
Okay. Dr. Piasik?
I was just going to clarify, I mean, that's where we were last month, is we were bringing things to FNF that hadn't been reviewed by TNL, and, you know, because they weren't part of a plan. So I'm not saying we have to micromanage, the whole point is we don't want to micromanage every step of this, so. But we've got a couple of years to move this through. So I just want to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to long-term budgeting of things that are not one-time money-type things.
My point in bringing this up to begin with is not to try to micromanage, and I don't mean that was the point that was being made. I think the concern I have right now, sitting here, is we just went through what was a very hard, tough emotional decision on a merger, and now we're sitting here, we've gotten a big pot of money at a really bad time, in a sense, because we're facing a huge, a larger deficit than what we had seen in previous years. We have outside factors like inflation that could be much worse than anybody can predict. And, you know, I just heard Mr. Clark say that we're going to use a million dollars of ESRS to cover the budget this year, rather than find real cuts in places that we probably should be looking. My overall concern is, as we use this money, and we should use this money as best we can for the purpose that it's intended, and I think we're doing that. But if we continue to pull in some funds here and there to take care of our budget, which needs to be addressed further, the cliff that we're going to face when this money runs out in the two or three years proposed is going to be larger than what we've predicted. If things continue to go in the direction they are, and in the foreseeable future, the next two years, they will. So I brought up the point out of abundance of caution, given what we are doing in the district tonight, and what we will have to continue to do to, again, make those harder decisions like tonight that we need to make, and not tiptoe around the real issue that's in front of us, which is uncomfortable cuts that we need to continue to be making. I think the plan is good, I, you know, that's not the point. My concern was, you know, are we looking at two years out on new things potentially that we may need to amend? Now, I'm hearing from Ms. Landish that that's not the case, so great. I'm comfortable with that part of it. But my concern is that, that we are, we're probably a little bit more comfortable than we should be right now with a pot of money that no one intended to have at a point when we have serious budgetary issues in front of us, so.
Well, I know from the beginning, Mr. Clark has always prefaced, we want to look at this as one-time, monies that we can spend one time. And I think we're trying to stick to that as much as we can. And I see people nodding their heads, saying that's what we want. So, you know, I agree with your charge, and I agree with your charge. If it was, maybe it wasn't a charge, but comments, comments. Okay?
I agree completely with what Mr. Clark has done in saying that that's how we should look at the money. My concern is that we're going to use a little bit here and there to fill gaps where we need, and that's not, that's the wrong thing to do. But the cliff is in front of us, as we have said fiscally, because that was, that's my concern, so. Thank you.
Ms. Roddy?
Thank you. I agree, it's important to have a plan with these dollars. The front of our packet describes it as learning recovery. If you read through it, the learning recovery is addressing both academic and mental health needs of our students. For me, as I exit my time on the board, I don't want to see these programs go away because ESRS dried up. The recovery is going to take longer for, longer than two years for some students. And I don't want to see the current line items for some of these programs disappear because we're, you know, the district's going to continue to run into times, I guess you call them desperate times. So while I agree, well, the board doesn't need to be micromanaging it, if these programs are meant to help with the academic and mental recovery of the students, they need to make sure that that line item in our current budget doesn't go away. I don't know how you're going to do that, but, at this moment in time, but those are just my concerns with using these funds. And I don't disagree with the plan, I just, I agree with Dr. Piasik in this, and I could get where you were going last week with this, that, yes, they're one-time, but I just don't, and if everything that's going to be going on, I don't want it to get lost.
And that will be our challenge. I think it's going to be a difficult challenge. I don't think there's, it's just going to be easy. I don't mean to make light of, you know, hey, we'll just have, we'll add things to the agenda, and we can take care of things. We do have very difficult decisions to make as we move forward, and I, you know, I think we need to look at this as a whole. I know this is one-time money, the ESRS monies, but we need to do our best to take all of our resources into consideration, use monies that should be, or funds that should be used for one-time purposes. That's a great goal to have. But right now, I hear us saying, let's not use it just one time, we need to build it back into, into the budget. So that will be our challenge. You know, there's a lot to balance there. There is complexity to this, it's not, it's not easy. Mr. Dietz?
And we are required to use, you know, 20% of our ESRS funds for learning loss, and we're going above that, which I think is appropriate, and learning loss related to COVID. So hopefully, we don't have another COVID in another couple of years, or something similar to it. So I see everything that Jody pulled together as addressing those immediate needs of learning loss, under a wide umbrella that reaches most of our kids in the district, in some shape or form.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I still need a second, I think.
I thought you had one.
Okay, sorry.
I would, maybe I can just fast-track this, just for clarification. I have a modification, which would be an amendment, that I can share with all of you. I wrote it down, so we don't have to have Sue, just to.
So you make this as an amendment? So you move to amend?
Would you like me to? Yeah. So I'm going to amend the motion to read, move to approve the year-one ESRS learning recovery plan and authorize access to ESRS II and ESRS III funds for the described year-one purposes. Year-two proposed funds are to be assigned but not dispersed until approval of year-two plan, not before March of 2023.
He's making that written.
Yeah.
You don't have a second on the other one, so you can just make them.
No, we do have a second.
You had a second.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
You did.
Oh, that's before we got into the conversation. Maybe then we'd be in an amendment.
Yeah, so.
Haven't we already spent year-one funds?
We've spent ESRS-I funds.
ESRS-I.
We have not spent year-one. I believe what this is referring to, year-one, is year-one of what we discussed.
The ESRS Learning Recovery Plan.
Okay.
So essentially, what you're doing is you're striking.
This is where you strike the first one, just that was.
And.
The first sentence is essentially the original motion, just adding the year-one clarification. But yes, I would like to strike.
So you're going to add the dollar amounts, and, I mean, so there's dollar amounts in here, in the motion. There isn't? I'm sorry.
No.
Would you read, I'm sorry, read the motion, please, that's actively on the table, Sue.
The motion is to approve the ESRS Learning Recovery Plan as presented.
Okay.
That was the motion.
Gotcha. So I would agree with Bill that really the simplest thing is to propose a strike and a replacement.
Draw the second and read it.
Okay.
So would, is that what you'd like to do, is to withdraw the initial motion? You agree?
They're not move this.
You're withdrawing. Is Greg?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have no motion on the table, and we're open for motions. Dr. Piasik?
Yep. I'll move to approve the year-one ESRS Learning Recovery Plan and authorize access to ESRS II and ESRS III funds for the described year-one purposes. Year-two proposed funds are to be assigned but not dispersed until approval of year-two plan, not before March 1st, 2023.
Second by Bill. Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm curious if Dr. Seabird is okay with this.
I just, may I?
Yes.
I'd just like to make sure, like Care Salis, for example, it's a three-year contract. There's a few things in there, potentially, that we're maybe paying for out of the gate. So then this, but I just want to make sure, from their perspective, that this is functional.
Well, if it's a three-year commitment, we need to figure out year three.
Yeah, it, it's a lump sum payment over three years. And so, the, the contract was proposed, I think, at $130,000 or $140,000, $40,000 a year-ish, uh, over three years. So, you see that in there. So, we had the year one payment set for year one, and then in year two, we were proposing to cover years two and three.
Actually, ESER three closes in the end of September of 2023.
Four.
Thank you. So, we actually roll into a third year because of ESER three.
Okay.
And that's why we were thinking we could cover the entire contract with ESER dollars.
And that would be an item that we would not look to then pull back into the district because we believe that three years with them, we would be establishing the partnership. We would have families establishing connections to providers, and then that would be something that could go away at that time.
So, I guess as we move through this, these items over the course of the next couple of years, we have to understand where there's caveats and what those caveats are. And we need to just clearly understand.
Sorry, Joe, maybe this will help answer that question. There is out language in that contract. It's not ironclad. I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but if that were to become the issue.
The amount was appropriate, so I think that's what we were kind of looking at.
Other discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Did anybody second it?
It was seconded by Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Rady?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Greg?
Okay. Our first discussion information item was the charter governance board updates. This item was agendized from a recommendation for future meetings, request made by one of our board members to learn more about our charters here in the school district of Waukaw. East High School wove this into their teaching and learning presentation update last month. This month, we highlighted our STEM charter, EAD chief charter, and Health Academy and Engineering Academy charters located at South High School. Our administrators for each charter, Melissa Horn, James Murray, Kevin Kitzler, Maria Dimato, Cucci, and Jason Smith, were also here to present. Each charter's mission and vision, governance boards, as well as general overview of their procedures, were provided.
This is a discussion item. Any comments or questions? Okay, Greg?
Our second discussion information item.
Can I interrupt just for?
Yep.
Can we go to a wide-angle shot of this meeting and let, and let our AV staff go home since they have school tomorrow and it's nearly midnight?
As long as Dr. Seabird agrees to take full responsibility for turning off the equipment.
I just, I just think it's something.
Fair enough. Good luck, Jen. Hey, thank you, Jen, for your time. You've been outstanding. And we wish you luck with your school tomorrow.
Almost today.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay. Our second discussion information item, oh, no, sorry.
Yep.
A discussion information item, yep, was elementary phonics and word study update. Melissa Yao, Director of Elementary Learning, and Emily Freeman, Elementary Literacy Coordinator, gave an update on the progress of Benchmark Phonics Word Study Workshop for grades kindergarten through five. The program was purchased in May of 2020, and this is year two of a six-year agreement with the print and digital materials. Updates on professional learning for teachers, teacher feedback, student data samples, and classroom materials were provided.
This is a discussion item. Any questions or comments? Exciting to see this moving forward. And as it's, as it's, it looks like it's going very well. Let's put it that way. Mr. Deeds?
Our third discussion information item was the elementary writing pilot. The elementary writing curriculum is up for review in our curricular design process. Melissa Yao and Emily Freeman, along with Dee Garcia, Director of Multilingual and Global Education, shared phase one in the revision process, which included information on the writing pilot. This was the first in a three-part series of presentations to the Teaching and Learning Committee, which will include a request for action in June.
Questions or comments on the writing pilot? Okay, Mr. Deeds?
Our fourth discussion information item was an update on family engagement. Indicator eight of the family engagement survey is one of the data collection requirements from our Federal Office of Special Education. In the state of Wisconsin, each school district must survey families every five years using the state collection system. Patty Havel, Director of Special Education, and Sherry Silla from the Wisconsin Statewide Parent Educator, Educator Initiative, went through the survey results and the pandemic's impact on those results, along with the planning for future, um, in the district. Waukaw is one of only seven districts in the state featuring a very robust parent-teacher-home-visit focus, something of which we are very proud of.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, Mr. Deeds?
Our fifth discussion information item was the high school social studies update. The high school social studies team continues to move through the curricular design process. They are currently still in phase one, in which they are piloting a series of curricular resources to align human geography, world history, and US history. In addition, based on the review of student achievement data and analysis of current pedagogy in the field and an unpacking of the newly revised standards, the team is making recommendations around the graduation requirements for social studies starting in the 2023, 2024 school year. The team is recommending making world history a year-long class during the sophomore year, making economics an elective, and requiring students to take personal finance before they graduate from high school. Rachel Herman, Director of Secondary Education, and teachers Chris Knudsen, Steve Rocks, Ross Freshwater, Kendra Zarnik, and Dan Prothero, along with CTE Coordinator Molly Habenshield, were on hand to provide this information.
Any questions or comments on that point? This will continue on for quite some time. We're in phase one, so we'll have plenty of time to continue and talk on this. Mr. Zenobia? Not that I didn't mean to cut any comments short tonight, so.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, I did have a couple of questions on this, um, watching this presentation. My, my first concern is incorporating economics into world history. Um, you're, you're, I don't, I don't mean this, uh, you're biasing a topic, um, to some degree by only looking at it through the lens of history, just as you would, you know, bias government if you only looked at it through the lens of economics. Uh, i- if we were to, um, do away with economics, and I like the personal finance side of this, but if we were to do away with economics, you know, we lose, um, basic principles that will affect every kid, student, young adult that leaves this, uh, district. World history will not have that effect on them. And I actually like world history. But, um, economic concepts are, um, far more important in life to all of us than, uh, than just history. I would, I would ask that administration look for a way to keep, um, all three, economics, personal finance, and world history, um, without cutting any of those. I know we're expanding to one credit for world history, but to, to, to look at keeping all those in place. Um, that's my concern. The, the second part of the, the thing I noticed in discussing this and a reason to have world history, uh, as a full credit was the materials lent to, uh, literacy amongst our high school population. So, I guess my question then is, why are we lacking there? Why, why are we relying on world history to fill that gap of, if we have a literacy problem, why shouldn't that be addressed separately, um, and, and another subject altogether? I, I, I guess if we're trying to sell something that might, to me, that might sound good, but there's other places to address that. You know, we're, we're talking about putting SEL in homeroom, uh, or replacing that amongst ninth graders. If, if we have that more important issue of literacy, why wouldn't we spend that time there? Or in economics or, or elsewhere. So, those were the few flags that I had comments on that I saw in the discussion.
And, and we might want to turn to Ms. Landish, uh, to maybe comment on that, to maybe broaden the perspective as to how we're actually interviewing literacy in a lot of different ways. So.
Thank you, Mr. Como. So, Mr. Zenobia, a couple of things. I'll start with economics first, and then we'll go to the literacy piece. So, in regards to economics, I'd like us to try to reframe our thinking as economics being eliminated. Um, it happens to be the case that we're actually enhancing or lifting economics across more areas than you mentioned than just world history. So, the new standards, as they have been adopted, require that economics is infused into every single course offering throughout the high school experience. So, economics would be lifted the freshman year through either human geography or AP human geo. It would be lifted in world. It would be lifted in US history. Um, and it would also be lifted in government. Um, our teachers, I thought, did an outstanding job that night, really describing how they themselves were unpacking the standards. Um, and I believe all our teachers felt very confident that the standards outlined by the state, I'll just give a few examples, um, using economic reasoning to understand issues, microeconomics, macro, how to analyze functions as a whole, evaluating government decisions and the role of government, including allocated, allocating resources, and students being better producers, consumers, and economic citizens. There's like six global economic standards that in essence are going to be infused into all the other core social studies areas. So, just wanted to address that economics piece. And I would say also from the literacy standpoint, and I know sometimes it's hard to watch a tape and get, get everything that's going on. But the point about world history is that currently our sophomores that take it, it's for a, a half a year. And so, what happens is there's a huge gap in any, um, what would be literacy-type skill that would be infused in world history. If world history turns to be a full-year-long course, then we can guarantee that those literacy skill sets are infused in a year-long, where in es- in essence, currently, a sophomore could have a whole semester off and take an elective that may not have as rigorously infused literacy skills in that elective course. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it does.
So, just wanted to add those, those two things.
Currently, is the only way to address those literacy standards with world history? They, they couldn't be addressed in other places?
They're addressed in classrooms throughout electives and cores, right? But in terms of what we can guarantee for all students, that, that would be a guarantee. We would know they would have that year-long course as a guarantee for all grade 10 students in high school. In addition to like their ELA class that they're taking, right? So, it's almost like a double dose. You're lifting, you're lifting both those subjects at the same time, which is also sophomore year, a highly tested area in terms of standardized accountability.
And if you put economics and world history side by side, you couldn't accomplish the same thing? And I'm just asking. It's just a question. I don't, you know the answer. I don't. But if, if we're trying to address that standard in that timeframe when we have those students captive, can it be accomplished in another way? Is, is, does it have to be world history? I, I just think that, to the point of the standard, um, what's being sacrificed is greater than the benefit, in my mind, you know? Um, so, that, that's how I would look at that. But I take your point. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? Yeah, Dr. Piasik?
I, I will make it quick, I promise. And I had a chance to say my piece at TNL. Um, I, I don't think, Mr. Como, that this is still phase one. This has been presented twice, and I think we're moving pretty quickly towards some discussions about potentially changing policy or changing, changing the plan. Um, so, my concern is that, um, we've not seen any alternatives. Um, I've heard the proposal in that we're trying to avoid having to increase the number of social studies credits required. Um, what would that look like if we increased the number of social studies credits? Um, I do think that there's room from an electives perspective. And the one thing that I brought up was just looking at our, our AP students. They take AP world, or AP human geo, AP world. These are two full-year courses. Those standards are set by the, the AP boards. I can tell you from personal experience, they're not learning economics. So, if, if that's the model for everybody else, that, that economics is not coming in to those AP classes. Now, it may, it may be an undertone in some of these topics, um, but it's not the intense level of, of economics that's, that's being presented in the economics course. So, and I say that just because we haven't entertained, we haven't heard any alternatives at this point. It's either what we're currently doing or this plan. And I would like to hear some alternatives about what that might look like. Is there, is there an elective second semester of world history or economics? What else could we consider to try to bridge the gap here, um, before we just say, it, it, you know, economics has to end up on the chopping block so that we can get personal financial planning in? I think most kids are able to get that all in and strength in conditioning. So, I just would like to see some alternative plans so we understand what the trade-offs are before we're forced into a decision.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Deeds?
Our sixth information discussion item was regarding the adoption of AP math textbooks. The advanced placement calculus courses, including AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, Accelerated Calculus I, and Accelerated Calculus II, are seeking to adopt a new textbook resource to align to the newly revised college board curriculum. Dan Puchinski, secondary math coordinator, uh, along with teacher Eric Fontaine, explained that throughout January and February, the AP calculus teachers have been piloting two textbooks. Each text is highly recommended by the AP College Board because of its alignment to the curriculum standards and rigorous learning experiences expecting, expected in the AP courses and on the AP exams. After piloting and soliciting feedback from teachers and students, the calculus pilot team will be recommending the adoption of Calculus AP Edition, 11th Edition by Larson and Edwards. Approval will be requested at the April Teaching and Learning Committee meeting.
Any discussion on this? Comments? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Our seventh discussion information item was an update on our key performance indicators relating to advanced placement. Advanced placement courses provide students with the opportunity to experience college-level coursework while they are still in high school. Amy Rebo, Data Communication Liaison, provided an update for the school district of Waukaw's AP course offerings. Participation in AP courses for the first semester of the 2021, 2022 school year, some trend data on course enrollment, and in keeping with our key performance indicators, an update on the percentage of students scoring at least a B. an update on the percentage of students scoring at least a B on their AP coursework during the fall semester.
Any comments or questions on this particular key performance indicator? All right, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report this morning. Our next meeting will be held on?
Don't make me laugh, okay?
April 5, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. here on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Moving on to government relations, given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Government Relations Committee meets quarterly, and our next meeting will be scheduled very soon. We will have a report to share at the April Board meeting. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reinacek. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you. There are no action or discussion items to report this evening. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, April 13, at 6:15 in Room 109.
Thank you. Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
As a gift to you all, I don't have to. Next Tuesday, we're meeting, and we're going to really start hitting the back.
Oh, so it will be longer? Is that what you're trying to say? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
That's already in the Gourdon. For those of you who are concerned finding it.
I'm done.
Kelly, is that right?
I'm already done.
Huh?
I'm already done.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, I will give that report tonight. We do have one action item, and we have a total of, it's like three discussion items. The committee discussed the food service program survey that was requested at the committee's February meeting. After some modifications to wording from the original draft, the committee agreed to forward the revision of the survey to the full board for their consideration. The committee approved the survey, and I so move. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Ms. Roddy.
This is a question, yes. There was, I heard some feedback from some parents at one of the schools that currently does not have this, the program implemented. And I think there's some confusion on how, what the program looks like in the school The parents are under the understanding that, under the impression that the children have to come early before school starts to receive the breakfast. Will you just share a little bit, Dr. Seber, on what it looks like in the school? Or, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I believe, I always say saying all, because with 13 elementaries, there's always seems to be an outlier. But since it's free and it's not a hot lunch, I believe all of it is in the classroom during the school day. We had some debate on, well, what happens next year if it's not free? Then we probably would go back to it not being in the classroom. But as of now, I would think it would be in the classroom during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? All right, Sue, please take the roll. Well, Dr. Piasik?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Dr. Seber, have you heard from principals on the interest in the breakfast program?
So February 10, so the day after the February Board meeting, Mr. Clark and I had a WebEx with the principals just to see what they were hearing and if they had requests or what the interest level was. We had seven of the eight that day, and we followed up subsequently with one of them. They had less than that 10 parents that had reached out combined in the eight schools. And they all had said that basically they hadn't heard anything prior to that February timeframe with F and F and the Board meeting. And periodically, they'd get a question from somebody that moved into the district or somebody that transferred from a different school that had it, but that it really was not a topic of conversation. And I think the other thing I would mention is, they all said they know who hungry kids are, and they just have food available, for the most part, in these eight schools, which, by the way, to my understanding, with the exception of Saratoga, have never had the program in the past. Not that we certainly can't ask it, and if they'd like it.
What is the goal of the survey? Like, have we established thresholds that we need to see in terms of interest in order for us to serve breakfast at a certain school? Like, what happens when we get the results back?
Which are in April.
Dr. Seber?
Our thought was, Mr. Clark and I working together, that we would bring those results back to F and F and then let the committee and ultimately the full board make a decision on what it tells us.
I think the question is, is if there's one, or 10, or 100, like, where do we decide the demand justifies the implementation? I don't know. I mean, I struggle to send out a survey when we don't know what we're trying to get from it. And I think what we're trying to get is some evidence that, or at least, I don't know, I didn't ask for it, but I think maybe what we're looking for is some proof that there is or isn't an interest. But I think Ms. Reinacek made an interesting point at one of the F and F meetings, that if you ask someone if they want something, they're probably going to say yes, or they may not respond. And so I've been working in research for many years. One of the problems with surveys is that if you don't get a representative sample, you really can't rely on the results. And so who's likely to respond? And so I am concerned about how this is being designed and how it's being executed, because I don't know that it really gets us any closer to resolving the issue. And I think I've been pretty transparent about how I feel in general about the program, given that it's temporary. I am concerned also that the in-classroom piece is, really, everybody's offered. So it's not necessarily about eating breakfast, it's about taking or receiving. But getting back to the survey, I mean, I just, I don't know how this is of value to us, and the timing of it is certainly not of value to us. I just, I apologize for asking this, I hope I can ask, but, Mr. Dietz, did you contact the PTO leaders? I'm just curious. You did not?
No.
None of them?
I talked to one.
Okay.
Talked to one. Did not give out any of your addresses, names, nothing. All of that is garbage.
Well, and I'm just wondering, because I have, I have, I have two emails, actually, over the last several months regarding the breakfast program. And, you know, one from a parent who's been pretty passionately outspoken about it and has also posted things on Facebook trying to encourage parents to reach out to us, and we haven't heard anything. And our administration is telling us that they haven't heard anything. And so my concern is, you know, we continue to kind of kick this can, we're going to do a survey, we don't know really what we're looking for in the survey. I have a whole page here prepared of what I would like to see in the survey, if we're actually going to do it, that would actually make it a useful survey, things like, I do think we need to understand if someone's interested in the program long-term, whether or not they qualify for free or reduced lunch or meals, you know, whether there's an interest versus a need. And so I don't necessarily feel like we're going to get anything that we're looking for out of this, so that's why I'm really struggling with it. And then I was trying to remember, how did we get here? Who asked for the survey? Did administration ask for the survey?
No, we talked about it at F and F in February. I think Karen and I were talking about it, and I don't remember exactly, but I think we both talked about the survey.
I didn't ask for a survey.
Okay. I thought, but maybe not. Okay, I'm not speaking for you. I agree to the survey.
I thought you did, Mr. Dietz.
I don't know that I did, but, I don't know, I mean, I didn't disagree to it, but I don't know that I was specifically asking for a survey. I don't know.
I think?
I can go back and look.
I think you asked for a survey to ask whether parents would be interested in free breakfast, and I said, well, let's let them know that, how we word it. Well, if someone asked me if you'd like a free dinner on Friday, I'd say, of course. So I remembered that, but I didn't ask for it, I was just replying to the word free and to make sure how it was worded so that they knew that this was temporary and asking if they really truly needed it, et cetera.
And two points to that. First of all, I guess I expected that if the survey was going to go out, that it would be timely and be done in February, but that was my assumption, and I guess I should have clarified a timeline on that, and I didn't do that. That's a good lesson to learn, to get clarification on a timeline. But in all fairness, on all the websites of these schools, someone from central office on day one put on there that you are not eligible for the breakfast program. So that's what parents have been seeing all year long, every time they go on their school's website. So what are they supposed to believe? I don't think they're going to question, you know, they assume that they didn't qualify. The PTA president that I talked to, I asked her, tell me about your breakfast program or why you're not getting it. She said, it's not offered here. We haven't, we don't qualify for it. Well, in reality, you do qualify for it. I mean, you know, so a PTA president, of all people, I guess I would think that they would know more than maybe the average parent about what's going on in the district, but if they don't even know about it. But it's on the district website. Every single school has it put on their website by someone here at central office.
And it says that breakfast isn't served at that location?
Yes.
Not that they're not eligible for it, but that it's not served?
Yes, not served.
So I am concerned about the dollar amount that's being thrown around quite a bit. I don't know if anyone else did this, but I spent quite a bit of time with Darren and Sherry so that I could understand that number. There's a, there's a lot involved in that, and it's a very high-level assumption, well over 200,000 breakfasts that factor into that estimate of $300,000 that may have been missed in terms of revenue. So I do think it's appropriate that we think about this in scale. You know, over 200,000 breakfasts, when I say breakfast, I say that in air quotes. You know, we're talking about cold cereal items, fruit snacks. I have seen a refrigerator full of excess items in a middle school. That's very concerning to me. I've read the DPI's guidance on sharing and no-thank-you tables. I know we have those right now in some of our schools. I don't think we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing when it comes to kids giving things back that they don't want. And my concern is, okay, so let's just say that we turned on breakfast at those eight schools, and we've got two months left in the school year. You know, this conversation about missed revenue to the district, we're kind of in this category right now, we're talking about $10,000 or $15,000 of net dollars from those breakfasts that would come to the district in our food service fund, that, yes, I understand we can use to maybe upgrade food items, but I also understand that our food service provider can't get the items that they're actually supposed to be getting. So I don't know how we upgrade things when we can't even get the stuff that we're supposed to be getting. My sixth grader did have cream-filled sandwich cookies for breakfast one day a couple weeks ago, and my high schooler had pizza. So there's a supply chain problem when it comes to this breakfast thing. And, you know, so I don't know that turning this on now is going to be the game changer that we're all, that we're all expecting. And I just remind you that it's a temporary program that then we're going to have to figure out how to unwind. And I'm not saying, actually, I, I think we all should kind of take a lesson here that we shouldn't be voting on things that we don't understand or that we assume, and I've learned some things through this process. But I don't think the survey gets us any closer to resolving this problem. So, you know, this question of the survey, so we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
On this?
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to table the motion to conduct a family breakfast survey and to defer to administrative authority on the need to implement breakfast across the district for the remainder of the 21-22 school year.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz?
Just a question.
Mr. Baumgart?
Is the survey really out, though?
Survey's not out, no.
It's not going out until?
And this is to table it, so I believe there is no discussion on the table? Oh, don't take my word on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Requires a second, it is not debatable, it's not amendable, and it passes if there's a majority. So we have to go to an immediate vote on a tabled item.
I have a procedural question, though, too. If it's just simply a motion to table, I get it, but there's also?
The second part to it, okay. Would you clarify the second?
We could split it. I mean, I kind of, I violated my own rule of one thing at a time, but we could split it, move to table, and then?
Yes, please.
And then move to defer.
Okay, who's second to that? Mr. Dietz did? Are you okay with splitting that? At least, we'll just have the, what's on, what's on the floor right now is just the motion to table, and it would require a second motion, Dr. Piasik, for the second part.
Yeah.
Okay? So we're voting on whether or not to table the survey.
William Baumgart. Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes eight-zero. Would you like to make?
Yes.
Another motion?
I would move to defer to administrative authority on the need to implement breakfast programs across the district for the remainder of the 21-22 school year.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Roddy. This we can have discussion on, yes. Thank you for that, noticing that. Mr. Montio, yes, go ahead.
Just so we're clear, this would give the administration the immediate authority to implement breakfast programs at those sites if they so determined?
Yes, or not.
Or not, great. Okay, great, thank you.
Good call.
Other discussions, comment, discussion, comment, questions?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Reinacek?
So this will not come back to the board for a vote. This is our vote right now to just leave it in your hands.
Well, at this stage of the game, yes. Mm-hmm, yep. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Cory Montio.
Yes.
William Baumgart.
Yes.
Karen Reinacek.
No.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes seven-one. So that will go back to administration this time, so. Moving on to our discussion and information items, we do have three of them. Our monthly budget report, revenues and expenditures continue to be within the budgeted limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. Any questions or comments on the budget? Monthly budget? Okay. Second item is long-range budget planning, Hadfield and Whittier merger. We basically had, the committee had discussed the long-range budget forecast, including the reduction in revenue limit authority that the district is projected to realize in the coming fiscal years as a result of continued declining resident enrollment and per pupil funding increase in the state budget. The loss of revenue, combined with a significant increase in CPI index, is driving the is driving the projected budget deficits in the years ahead, based on the current projects. We are looking at, as you know, the seven, seven million budget shortfall for the 22-23 school year. Just going to finish this out, just because we formally did report on this. I know we all had this tonight, but at the committee, we also, it was presented a recommendation, a recommended budget plan that allowed, that will allow the district to approve a balanced budget for the 22-23 school year. There are a number of areas that would be impacted by the adjustments, as we know. And I truly do appreciate all of the hard work that went into that presentation. I know our administration has been presenting consistently this information to our constituents, to our board, a number of different times. And it's, it's, it's evolved as we've had more questions over time. So we, we appreciate all the hard efforts there. Any other questions or comments on, on that? And then our SFR fund. We also had a pretty long conversation on that. And we will continue to move forward with that process as we had discussed that tonight, so. Mr. President, that concludes my report. Got to have a little bit of fun this time in the morning, right? Fair enough. Other business, are there any recommendations for future full board meetings or recommendations to shoot off to committees? Mr. Zanobia?
Sir, thank you. I do have one. It's come up throughout the listening sessions. And again, tonight, in discussions about, with the merger going forward of Hadfield &amp; Whittier, would there be consideration for a name change for the new school? And I would like to see administration look at that and have us discuss it in the near future, if we could, please.
Any other? Mr. Montio?
Thank you. I would like to bring the subject of the incident that happened at South a year, year and a half ago with the firearm and the shooting. I know that, I, I think that gentleman has been prosecuted. I know he's been prosecuted. I don't know if he's been convicted or not. The issue I'd like to address as soon as possible is the timeline as to what happened, what our response was, how our procedures worked, and if they didn't work. I'd like to go through that whole timeline. When the phone call happened? What was our response? Did our systems work? So the public and we know as much as possible, did our system work? And if it did, great. If it didn't, what improvements could be made? I know we've talked about this before. There was some issue with timing, I think, with the Cromo case. But we could just look at that again.
Any other suggestions? Dr. Piasak?
I have one. It may be for a committee, but given the, the length of the last few TNL committee meetings and so much attention that we need to spend right now on literacy at all age levels, all grade levels, I wonder if we could have some further discussion about the idea of an ad hoc committee focused on literacy for a period of time. I'm just concerned that we can't squeeze everything into the TNL agendas. And I think this is a really important topic, and I feel like we're not giving it enough time and energy right now. It's just, I'm just throwing out there for discussion, and it doesn't have to be, you know, something immediately that comes back to the board, but I'd like to see if there's something we could do specifically to reduce the burden on those TNL agendas and really get a little bit deeper on literacy.
Okay. Any other suggestions? All right, we do not have a need for a closed session. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and hard work this evening. We are adjourned.